All right, let's start the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Village Board Meeting at six o'clock. Uh, if you want to do a roll call, presence.
Gilgan, trustee.
Chris Duvette.
Chris Marshall.
Mike Kepers.
Brian Chrome.
Josh.
And Donnie Kern is with us by Zoom.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, good stand for the pledge of allegiance. Plaid to the United States of America, and we are a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right, uh, public comments, minutes per person, fourteen minutes per item, if anybody wants to speak. If you guys can state your names and your address.
I'm Happy Ness, four five three, Karaman, in here in Somerset. Kim Dunleavy, and I live on Main Street. And Kathy and I are here tonight, we're the co-chairs of the Somerset Champions. And first off, we'd like to thank the Village Board for bringing the CAP project to the community and hiring Todd Streeter as a consultant to help facilitate that project. Uh, it was a great, it was a lot of work, but um, it was really fulfilling to work our way through the process. And so we thank the Philly, Philly Board for making that happen. And then also for uh, the Somerset Champion kind of being born out of that project. We um, just wanted to give you an update about what's happening, and we have something happening pretty soon. So we wanted to let everybody know, we're collaborating with Joanne Harddager, and she is in her fourth year of promoting, cleaning up the streets and roads um, in Somerset and in the township, and she has worked with the village, and the village has paid for this interactive map that is available. Uh, you can find it on the website, and lots of people have been posting it on social media, where you can go and adopt a street, clean it up, and then mark it as complete. So we're working with Joanne, and then also the high school students sponsor a community day. And this year it's going to be on Friday, June second. And so we're working with both of them, and we're inviting other community members to come and join us on Friday morning, June second, from nine to twelve. We're gonna meet in the village park, hand out garbage bags that the village is gonna supply. Um, and then send people off to various aspects. We have riverbanks to clean up, we have parks that we're going to address, village streets, and if we get through all of that, we'll start making our way out into the town. So we're gonna work from nine to twelve, and then we're gonna host a cookout and feed all the volunteers. And we invite everyone here to come and join us. Friday, June second, nine to twelve, we're gonna start in the village park, we'll end in the village park. If you have any questions, let us know, please watch for it on social media, share it, so that we can get the word out and get a good crew to show on. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Public comment, please.
No, no, I have a comment. You wanna say it?
Well, yeah, I think.
I'll just let her go first.
What, um?
Name.
Oh, my name's Susan Ring, um, owner of the Rondavee Somerset. Uh, um, I guess I'm here because I need to understand a little bit more about the, the Community Thursday. Um, what is it?
Market Fest.
Market Fest, yeah. So I didn't realize that, I think the um, one of the items on the agenda tonight is to maybe close the bounds of the Main Street, right in front of the Rondavee Sportsman's. And I just wanted to voice my concern, um. On Thursdays, we have, you know, some events going on, and I'm not, I don't understand how people would actually get to, if you can't get to the Rondavee or the Sportsman's one way, and then the second way, the only way that's open, I think it's proposed to close that for on Thursdays.
It's such a proposal, are you saying that the only part that would be shut down is Main Street, the two hundred block of Main Street?
So from the lights to Garfield.
Correct.
So right in front of the Rondavee, right in front of the empty lot where the Market Fest is going to be, and then the, so that whole street would be closed, right?
Correct, and car show and bike show.
Okay, so, but then how would people get to our locations?
Park on Spring Street, all the way around Spring Street, Garfield Street, Francis Street.
So another detour.
Not really detour, I mean, there's.
Okay, all right.
I um, talked at length with your husband about this, and he was.
Yeah.
We were all for it.
Um, yeah, Market Fest, absolutely, I think, we're both, we think it's a great idea, um, I'm not sure we were, we understood that the home, the, the Main Street would be closed, pardon me, and our food tent, um, there was a um, something in a comment that the Rondavee was gonna have a food tent at Market Fest.
Yeah, put that, said maybe sell food or something like that.
Oh, well, I, not a food tent, but yeah, I mean, we could do pizza by the slice or something, but I don't know. You know, we don't have any way to cook the pizzas, like, we don't have any equipment to like, you know, like a food truck or anything, but yeah, we would be able to sell pizza by the slice or something from the Rondavee. Uh, um, so I guess I'm here to, to um, voice my concern, I would prefer not to close that road. And then also, I think there was a proposal to do like a um, uh, uh, beer and wine selling at, at the Market Fest, have uh, a different licenses. I don't know who would carry it, but um, if maybe the people that already currently have um, beer, wine, liquor licenses, if we could just keep it like that, maybe, you know, sell from the establishments that currently have them. Instead of an additional, um, I mean, business is not what it used to be, I think everybody knows that downtown's pretty, pretty dead. So that would help, I think, everybody, um, if there wasn't another um, beer, liquor um, license given out. Um, but yeah, the concern, I guess, I would be inclined to say maybe since there's just so little traffic, maybe just not close the Main Street.
Can we use your lot for the car show? Your big beautiful lot?
Um, well, I mean, we could, I mean, like I said, we have events, and on Thursday night, we do have some things going on, so I mean, would it? I would hate, I don't know how many cars.
Just four to four P M. to eight P M. is all.
Four to eight. Um, do I have to answer that right now? Okay, can I get, I'll get back to you on that. So that, those are my concerns, and like.
Sure, thank you.
Ned Physicus Sportsmans, um, we're totally against that, we're good, we're for everything. Michael and I and Missy had a meeting, an extensive meeting about it, and voiced all our concerns to him, and they went like this over his head, and now I see that he says we're fine with it on this, and we're not fine with the last meeting, and I even said, I'm not coming to the meeting because there's no sense in even talking to you, because you already have your mindset that it's gonna be like Forest Lake and uh, River Falls. And I'm like, this is Somerset, and the things we voiced was the parking, the street closure for the Rondavee and us, I even explained to him, the beer picnic wine license should not be granted. We should do it through the Sportsman's Rondavee, and he has a beer license, we told him, he could do it right there, too. He said they were gonna do food outside in a tent, his cook wanted to do it. Um, so that would be fine if they let him do that, we're, we're for everything, except for, we're concerned about the street closure and the beer and wine license. And I don't know, is there anything I'm missing on it? I, I'm all for everything.
I don't, I don't know where you said that, I said you were.
We had a meeting at the Sportsman's out on the patio in the bar with you.
Yeah.
It was like.
In the meeting.
Oh, it says it right here, I can, I can read it to you.
Okay.
It says, um, all right, this is so small, this discussion, possible recommendation, open container request. Mike Kappers explained during Somerset Community Market Fest, patrons could purchase a designated cup to carry around on village streets from four P M. to ten P M. The Market Fest will include the farmer's market that used to be held at Apple River Liquor, which I don't know, it must still be there, it's not, I don't know, other vendors, food trucks, live music, car shows, and bike shows. Kapper stated he spoke with Becky at Apple River, and she is fine with the farmer's market moving, Rondavee will have a food tent in their lot. Kappers also spoke to Sportsmans who said that business is hurting with the bridge closure, and they are excited for a way to bring people into town, which is true. The street would be closed from Sportsman's to Garfield Street. Chief, uh, whatever I can't pronounce it, asked if Somerset United applied for a street use permit. So that's what it said, and that's what it says on that sheet, and you already know, Missy and I are not for it, so I don't know why you would have stated that.
I don't, I mean, I think I said it that way, but I can go back and listen.
Okay, and then remember I said when you were talking, I'm gonna be like Mike Kappers and record everything, and you said everyone, you always have to do that, because everyone's toothpaste. But now all of a sudden, you say that about us, so I don't know, and you knew exactly how we felt. Like, I am so mad right now, Mike, at you, we like you as a person, you're fine, but don't be saying stuff like that, because we are not fine with that.
I'll double check to make sure and see what I did say.
Okay, but you already know, right? Am I, am I saying, Missy and I had a discussion with you, and we are not fine with that?
Right.
Okay. And I don't know, does anyone have a question about anything, I'm like shaking, I'm so mad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
I do, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I'm concerned about um, if you do allow that beer picnic license, how you're going to um, coordinate it up from people having stuff in their cars and stuff, and walking out to their car, and then coming and pouring in their cup or whatever, since you're taking the business from the bars uh, for the drinks and stuff. So I don't, I know you, they're gonna have a cup.
A cup and a wristband.
Exactly, so when they go over to Rondavee's parking lot, or down Spring Street or something, in their car with their cup, and they're filling it up and coming back. But uh, Sue and Pat and Missy and I are losing money from that. I don't know how you're going to um, control that.
Keep an eye on it. Thank you. Public comment is closed, we can um, review the minutes from April eleventh and the April eighteenth meeting. And what we've done in our training is that we're not supposed to accept the minutes, but we're supposed to receive the minutes, if that makes sense.
I can approve the minutes.
The minutes or receive them, so.
Yeah, should ask if everybody's ready, whether they have changed it to make sure they're at it.
I have a question on the April eleventh minutes that were, that were sent out um, again here late this evening, um, has everybody had a chance to review them? Because I think they're the same ones that we had received before, that I asked if they were changed.
I responded, excuse me, I responded to your email, Donnie, and sent you the correct minute better in the packet, I didn't know, we were not.
Okay, so I looked at them, uh, that email again, and it said the same um, minutes that were, I questioned were before, so that's why I was wondering um, if somebody could just read them, if they're not that long.
I can email right now.
Okay, Amy is going to email you that it's better in the packet.
Thank you.
I just ordered it to you, Donnie.
Just got them. The ones, like, the ones that you forwarded. Mike?
Yes, sir.
The ones that you just, you may had, had a motion by Kern, seconded by Lee to adjourn in motion carried. Right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, well, Lee didn't second the motion to adjourn.
Comment.
And this has, these minutes have nothing as far as the motions from Josh Heck that, that wanted to do nothing, and that was seconded, and that one didn't pass, and then it went to a motion being carried. Now, th- these minutes don't include any of that.
So at five forty, I responded to your email with the correct minute.
I was just reading the ones that Mike had just forwarded to me, and
uh, is your issue, Donnie, that it just went straight from public comment to adjourn? Didn't have, we're missing, yeah, we are missing quite a bit of detail, there wasn't quite a bit of stuff that went on besides that.
Do you think you can go through with it?
Okay.
Amy just something, I just.
I just, I just, thank you.
And that's what's in your package.
Yeah, I mean, we have the updated ones, it's just he's saying there's a lot of the stuff. There's not any here.
The update ones, this, this.
No, not the.
This is your packet, not what's on there.
Don't worry about those minutes, very fast, it's the same.
No, these minutes right here, in your book, I have the minutes that you were reviewing.
Now, so the emails that Amy just sent in, that you had sent, were the actual ones.
But I just sent the correct, right?
No, the old one.
It's called April eleven, and that's what I had. That's, I think, um, I'm, I'm, because look, it, we should not do that, I mean, because we're on the bound.
Oh, yeah, there is, yeah.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Donnie, I, the ones in our book have uh, quite a bit more detail.
Is it almost three pages, or?
Yes, sir. Two and a, two and a line.
Yeah, those are the ones I'm reading right now, there's still things picking out of this, though, but if you guys want to approve them as they, as they are, that's.
Well, I mean, it is recorded, and it is on YouTube, if anyone does want to go back and relive it. Besides, anybody want to make a motion?
Gilgan, I move to receive the minutes from Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Brian Chrome, second. Discussion. All in favor?
I, I.
I oppose. You guys. What a motion for the second, April eighteenth.
I'd like to make a motion, you received the minutes for April eleven, twenty twenty-three.
April eighteen.
That's.
And the eleven.
It's the eighteenth, Mike.
Second, Brandon Cross, second. Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Both. Motion carries. The presentation, uh, made, Ellers. Is Michael, yep, there he is, he's.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
I'm Brian.
Yeah. Okay.
Brian, are you gonna tell us that we uh, we had a rich, rich uncle that passed away, and you're getting a bunch of money?
I wasn't following the obituaries, so I apologize, I wouldn't know. Um, so am I, I'm just, do you guys all have the packet, otherwise I can share my screen as well?
Yeah, if you can share your screen, screen as well for the people in the audience.
Sure.
I just.
Let's go here. Give me one second, okay. Are you able to see the presentation on screen now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all uh, for having me, and also uh, I think I heard my colleague Sean in there as well. Um, so the village did engage others to review the sewer utility as a result of some of the current projects that you have, as well as um, projects going on in the future. And so when we look at enterprise funds, we like to not only look at um, kind of what's going on now, but look a little bit into the past, and then ten years into the future. One of the reasons for that is that enterprise funds operate a little differently than your governmental funds, in that enterprise funds operate more like a business, and that business is, you know, for the water utility, selling safe drinking water, um, and then for the sewer utility disposing that water uh, in a safe manner. And so you need to, you know, operate a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five safe, safe system to your customers, and that's very capital intensive, and what I mean by that is that the asset costs to implement the assets to provide that service are very high, and as well as to maintain that system uh, requires some high maintenance expenses, which causes some volatility in your operating expenses year over year, so just kind of looking at last year and saying, well, let's go from there, um, isn't a worthwhile analysis, so that's why we kind of like to look more into the future, so if you were to review section one of the report, that is a historical analysis that analyzes five years uh, in the past. And then um, one note, uh, as well as that there has been a rate adjustment in that time. Um, it looked like sewer rates were last adjusted, uh, effective January seventeenth of twenty eighteen. And then section two of that report is to go into that ten-year analysis and, and to identify, how do we navigate rates? Um, not just kind of for the sewer utility, but understanding that, you know, the water utility may be adjusting rates from time to time as well. Um, although we did not do a water rate study, uh, this is focusing on the sewer rates. Uh, but that said, kind of identifying what are the approaches to rate adjustments, uh, so that we're not having rate shock, or, you know, rate adjustments of like twenty percent uh, or greater, so that we can smooth those rates over time. And then lastly, we look at what is that impact on users, um, and that is section three of the report. So kind of going into the historical analysis, again here, I know this is a numbersy table, but it's just to identify the two ways uh, the rate-making industry kind of looks at the expenses within a utility to understand what should our rates be, you know, so um, that falls into kind of two methodologies, cash basis and utility basis. Um, if this were a water rate analysis in the state of Wisconsin, we'd be more focused on the utility basis, because that is what the Public Service Commission uses. Uh, but in this case, we're unregulated, so we can kind of look at it both ways, but understand that we're not benchmarked to this rate of return factor that's identified here. Um, and so we, we primarily want to make sure that we're covering our ongoing O and M expenses and our debt expenses at minimum, but then also have some leftover reserves to maintain with those years that we experience volatility in the maintenance expenses, as well as be able to con- control how much debt we're taking out, and how much we're funding via cash. So that said, I would lead you to look kind of at the rate adequacy for the cash basis, and understanding some years, you have more capital that you're adding than others, like twenty twenty versus twenty eighteen um, and twenty twenty-two, uh, for example. And so just for that, the, you know, you will see kind of a rate spikes in terms of deficiency and adequacy uh, there, but ultimately to kind of look into the future, our recommendation, um, kind of without any future capital, so um, nothing for twenty-three and beyond would be about a fourteen point nine percent adjustment is where we kind of landed, uh, looking at this chart. Then in terms of where are we going as we kind of move into section two of this analysis, uh, we want to look at that future capital. So we've kind of gathered the information as it relates to O and M and kind of project that forward, but then we want to make sure, how are we funding our future capital? The one note here, based on.
Back up one, one, sure, we back up one second here, because I don't want to, I don't want to go forward and then come back. Uh, the fourteen point nine percent derivative that you come up with, where uh, that uh, number is, is factored in, in what? Can you tell me where, where that, I mean, you got fourteen point nine percent, but I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, and uh, all I see is a red one twenty-six, six thirty-six for adequacy, which I think that's where you derive the fourteen point nine percent.
Sure, so I think the main difference there that I'll point out is, if you were to look at your twenty twenty-three budget, that would not yet include the Clean Water Fund loan that you took out in twenty twenty-two, and the reason for that is because um, that works like a draw loan, so the Clean Water Fund loan is a state program um, in which uh, you get your state funding, that also comes with grant components, um, and kind of a limited interest rate, so there's benefits to that program. But one of the things that kind of happens is it works like a draw loan, and your principal payments do not start until substantial completion of that project, so last I looked on the E I F website, you're still making disbursements um, on that, uh, meaning that, that, that loan amount is to be determined. But that said, we've projected what that loan amount will be, so we wanted to add that in, so as not to say, just because your twenty twenty-three budget doesn't have that principal in, doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing something now, since we're on regu.
That's the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that's coming up on the twenty twenty-three for debt?
It'll be coming up, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, I just kind of added that in with our twenty-two Clean Water Fund loan, adding that uh, debt service number into your budget.
So how much was that debt service number?
Um, about one, let me grab that here. Uh, that be, it's projected to be about two hundred thousand.
So we got, so that two hundred thousand, is that falling under the number two cash, uh, number two line of the, the debt? And that, and that uh, um, first slide that you put out there for debt service, two thirty-five, two twenty-nine?
Correct, that's kind of uh, building to that, correct, but it doesn't come on until about twenty-fourth.
So if I'm right at seeing this, and tell me if I'm wrong, but uh, you got two hundred and thirty thousand dollar debt service in there that we, we are putting on the books, but it could be forgiven, or it will be forgiven, it just hasn't been forgiven yet.
No, that's with the principal forgiveness.
Okay, so the principal forgiveness is, okay, so that, that debt that we have there is, is, is not, that's, that's not going to be forgiven.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That was my only question, thank you for clarifying that.
Nope, certainly, thank you for asking, and, and please do not hesitate to stop, I, I agree with not having to jump back, you know, several slides or anything like that, so do not hesitate to stop as I go. Um, in terms of the capital, uh, this just kind of identifies the future projects, the one note here is, uh, since producing this, uh, it looked like we did receive from the engineers the actual bid numbers, so uh, it looked like Churchill uh, reconstruction for the sewer portion, as well as uh, the Main Street under Bridge Crossing. Those numbers uh, did increase, so I'll kind of speak to that effect um, on a later slide. Uh, but just know those, those numbers will be revised, and we'll send that uh, table to what I speak to tonight. Uh, we'll send those updated tables uh, to the village as well. So ultimately, what we uh, came to in terms of a future rate needs and recommended adjustments here are highlighted in green, and more or less, the lighter greens are kind of the navigate as we go, understanding that, you know, we can't uh, crystal ball your O and M expenses, like I said, we we add an inflationary factor, but they in truth kind of experience some volatility, which can be hard to predict. Um, so for that reason, uh, we want to make sure, make sure that we're launching from a fair point, and then speaking with staff, uh, we believe we are, and then kind of increasing from there, but in terms of the dark green, those would be kind of identified above what we would say for an inflationary adjustment. It should more or less uh, be put into practice um, in order to service the Clean Water Fund loan, uh, the. that was taken out and will be fully dispersed for payments starting in 2020, for principal payments, excuse me, starting in 2024. So this is a summary, long range cash flow that just kind of works revenues at the top, net expenses to identify what's our number available for debt. And the most important, you know, kind of line here is to make sure that including all of your debt service, kind of are you at least at one, but you should be a little above one. So typically we kind of recommend about 1.1 for this line. So you can kind of see here that over the 10 year period, this is where we kind of landed for our rate recommendations in as well as kind of maintaining some adequate cash targets. So the one thing that I'll say here is we do allow the cash target to dip below, or we allow the cash reserves to dip below our target, excuse me. Understanding that since you're producing a little more cash each year, over time you'll organically kind of create a natural cash flow when you take out revenue secured debt. So this is a kind of way to say, this is almost the minimum approach. All other things being equal of the rate adjustments that we would recommend as a result of the capital that is to be taken on and expected O and M levels that we would see here. So that said, speaking to the projects, excuse me, before I advance here, speaking to the addition of the higher numbers for the two projects that I identified a slide earlier and running that analysis. Are you all able to see the Excel sheet that I have open here now instead of the PDF? Okay. I know the numbers might be a little smaller, so I'll hope to blow that up. But the one difference that I'll note here is that we'd probably recommend just, you know, as you go into the future, potentially kind of looking at increasing some of those other inflationary expenses. Otherwise you'd be kind of dipping further into those reserves below target. That said, you could maintain the previously shown kind of cumulative adjustment of, you know, 36% over the 10 year period. But more than likely, you know, with those volatile maintenance expense years, if, if it does tend to kind of creep up, we'd probably recommend something closer to 42% and that could be achieved in these later years as I have not changed 23 through 25, but rather changing kind of 27 through 31 here. And just kind of adjusting those further. So with the increased project costs as a result of those bids, that would be kind of the 10 year recommendation. But as I'll repeat on a slide later, by no means do we ever recommend doing a rate resolution for more than one year because you're unregulated. So there would be kind of no need to go back and rescind that resolution if you need to adjust that rate adjustment. So you kind of get to choose what to do per your ordinance and being unregulated. So kind of doing these on a year to year basis and adjusting those rates appropriately.
Brian, I have a question for you. Are figures these numbers in, does this also figure in for growth and things like that? So if we grow and we have, and that development takes off and we get another development, does this, does this cost go down and we spread the costs out or is it just per gallon, no matter what, this is what it's going to be?
I, it does not include like a material number of growth in terms of revenues. What I would say there is that's when you kind of analyze 2025 and beyond in kind of speaking to, usually growth comes with equal and additional operating and maintenance expenses, not exactly one to one, but saying that there is, you know, more pumping expenses that would be required, maintenance on the lift stations, mains, additional capital work. So just kind of some of those considerations should be made. So to speak in generalities, I would say that, no, it does not include growth, but I think just expecting growth to pay for things does not always work out. So that's, that's the reason to say this should be kind of analyzed year, year to year, but get an understanding of what the long term would look like just to manage those expectations.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Want to, I'm just trying to find any type of relief for our residents as far as water bills go and stuff like that, to see if there perhaps will be any type of relief on the horizon or anything we can look forward to.
Right. And, and the other note that I'll say here that isn't part of this is analysis, but that's, you know, the reason to implement and maintain and update your, you know, connection fees to make sure that growth kind of pays for growth. The use of tax increment financing can help that as well as, you know, additional tools and alternative revenue sources to lighten the burden on the ratepayers. And as well as the reason for using a mix of cash and debt. If you were to just fund everything with cash, you're saying all the users to date of the use of that cash are paying for these assets that future users are actually going to be using as well. So that use, using a mixture of cash and debt provides for some generational equity there as well. And that's kind of why we've shown that mix of cash and debt.
One more-
Speaking of-
Sorry, Donnie, I have one more question.
One, one other question, has there been any, or are you aware of the, the current biosolids?
Was that your question? Sorry.
I think, I think Donnie broke up there.
I just stopped talking because I thought Brandon had a question.
I do. Yeah, I have a question. All right, now you go, Donnie.
My question is on the biosolids has got a, has approved and some additional cost increases, is that, is that reflective in these numbers at all that you're aware of? Because we're-
Are we getting from the? Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, I interrupted.
Did, did someone answer his question? I apologize.
I just said that I answered it incorrectly. I thought that it came out of a different fund, but it does, that should come out of this fund, it sounds like.
Right. So kind of as it relates to, you know, your, your special charges or outside of kind of your flat fee and volumetric charge, what we'd recommend there is, you know, identifying what are the, you know, cost causation within the systems, such as suspended solids, BODs, you know, nitrates, phosphorus, whatever's coming through that you need to treat and identifying what, what is the fair charge there?
They're, they're looking at basically borning back for each municipality. For us, it's looking at like close to a half a million dollars that we have to fund either through a clean water, the Clean Water Act. And I don't know if we already have the Clean Water Act loan out, which I was, wasn't aware of until just now. If that, if we can piggyback on that with a second clean water or is, if we have to find a different funding mechanism for, for that already approved expense for the biosolids.
So that was not included in the 2022 clean water fund loan? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was just proved, it was approved this spring.
So that would need to be added because that's, you know, something that I'm not seeing in the capital list that was provided to others.
So that's going to have to be figured in as well as the additional cost increases for the construction of the bridge, right?
Correct. If that's not in the 22 loan, as it sounds like it's not, we would need some detail on the biosolids project that's moving forward.
Are we able to get a secondary clean water loan through the Clean Water Act on that? Or are we already, have we already utilized that, that asset?
I'm not sure if you guys put in an intent to apply for that, we can look into it. But you need to put in an intent to apply. And then typically that application process, unless you've already applied last September, that application is due in September of every year. So you'd have the summer to kind of put in for that. And then that loan could first kind of close January 2025. So you may have to find some kind of interim funding. I don't know the construction schedule or pay applications that would be coming in, but that would be the other factor there is when is that project?
Had some additional funds, they were going to kind of try to self perform until they, they started, they really had to borrow money and, and they had some asset, what we call reserves that they were going to utilize until they get to that point. Now, I don't know if those timelines will, well, and after, I think it's important that if we're going to be talking about this and we have all of the stuff on the table so that we, we don't have to come back again to, to the residents over or something like this. You know, if we, if we can get the Clean Water Act and get that, that funding mechanism, it's much more lucrative to us. And then, than not having that option on the table.
Sure. I totally agree.
Remember my question? So based on, so the, the numbers that we had figured, that was based on, is that the waste percentage of water? Is that based off the DNR report that we have of roughly 20% water waste?
I'm not, which number were you pointing to in the presentation? I'm not following.
Oh, it isn't in there, right? I don't see it in this one. However, I have, there has been changes in water waste over the last few years. Has that, has that factored into the, does that factor into any of your calculations?
How would that apply?
Well, if you have water that's wasted, then that's money, that's water that's being pumped and not being used. Then it's wasted, that's waste in the system. So that just doesn't figure into it at all?
Are you speaking to non-revenue water? Is that like lost, lost water within your water system?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sewer rates. Got it.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. So just kind of to get a sense, and I'll go back to the Excel here. If we were to kind of use, what is this 42% look like or each kind of one off 10%? Look like we provide this projected impact and focus on the sewer utility here. The water was just shown to just for display purposes only. By no means was there any study done to say that three percents are needed or that you're eligible for the simplifies. We can certainly look into that, but just to kind of put the full utility bill on there. It was provided so that you could see it. But in terms of the 10% and, and then effect on an average residential bill, we're, and again, we're taking out about 4,000 gallons per month, applying these percentages to your current rates, looking at about, you know, $5 and change for each of the 10%. And then in total, $22.58 and that's with the updated project cost, but not the biosolids as, as just discussed.
That's $5 per month, so it's $60 annually though, right?
Correct. Yep. $64.18 there on an annual bill, as you'll see here in the charts that we provide.
That doesn't take into fact though, businesses, businesses use a lot more water, right? Or are they, so they would be looking at a substantially higher increase.
Right. Yep. And again, you'd probably want to do a full sewer rate study to kind of identify that true impact there and that, that cost causation. If you wanted to make sure that, you know, those rates were set kind of fair and equitably. Again, we're engaged to just look at the long range cash flow, but we can certainly move into that phase of the full sewer rate study at your leisure. So the first look that we identify kind of affordability on is a percentage of MHI statistic, and that is median household income. When I speak to MHI, the MHI is listed from the Census Bureau data that's available on the DNR's website, identifies 66,146. This is kind of the parameter that's used to identify the available principal forgiveness for the utility. So it's an important number. But that said, as it relates to a percentage and that initial affordability look, the American Water Works Association benchmarks Midwest utilities by utility, you should start to kind of investigate alternative rate structures for affordability. If one utility is, you know, in the range of two to 4%. So if you're to look at both utilities here, as we are, you know, we're, we're under that 4%, you know, what would be four to eight percent. So we are under that four to eight percent. That's by no means saying that rates are affordable. It's just kind of one benchmark that we present to just kind of identify for an average residential user. What does that kind of look like there on the 10 year plan through this analysis? Some other considerations as we spoke to village staff in wanting to look at that the fixed charge, they've identified kind of accounts for 16.7% of average residential bills. And they were kind of asking, could we look to revise rates to increase this percentage? And one of the targets identified was 25%. So one of my later slides identifies that alternative and what that might look like. And then also, you know, if you do experience large system changes or would like to investigate the equitability of your charges across customer classes, that we would recommend doing that rate study in order to kind of iron out those rates by class as well as identify those BOD rates, suspended solids, et cetera, so that the cost causation can be made up within the recommended rate, rates for the utility. In speaking to kind of that adjustment, what that might look like as an example for 2023 and that 10%, if you were to just take 10% across the board, we have this 2023 proposed. If we were to alter the volumetric and fixed charges to kind of more of that 25% number, this was the number that we kind of came up to get to what that alternative rate structure might look like to apply more fixed charges to the users. And again, you do charge by meter size as is typical and is done on the water utility as well. So this, you know, as you'll see here, it's kind of maintaining the volumetric rate actually and increasing that fixed charge to kind of get closer to that 25% target. And then again, part of our recommendation, as I stated earlier, is that when you look to adjust sewer rates, you know, do what's needed at the time. It's good to maintain a long-term plan to understand what's coming and how we should navigate rate adjustments because we are unregulated. We can kind of choose what to do. But that said, I'm doing it at one increase at a time unless on that clean water fund loan program, you would need to adopt a rate resolution that would have several rate adjustments, as sometimes is the case. Here, not needed, but certainly there are adjustments needed over time to get to your principal. So with that, I can kind of take any questions or comments that you may have.
When do we need to, are we hoping to get a approval on that thing? So we'd be looking to approve this the next couple of months then, right? Bob, wondering if you want to see this? It doesn't need to happen.
Really, we're up to you guys. Certainly could have a lot more discussion, lots of related other internal things that are included in this. For sure. I think that's wise.
Yeah. These are the biosolids, about a half a million dollars, that's not showing on there.
And we just don't know yet because biosolids is their own activity, so we're kind of waiting for their decisions.
Yeah, they're only on phase one, right? That's only for phase one, yeah. And then you think we'll hear something.
There was phase, that was phase point five, I believe it was.
Not even one, we didn't even have one yet.
Well, then they went back to, well, maybe biosolids to take up the, the- cider cane water loan and some of the municipalities and that's going back and forth.
Oh, I thought they had pretty much decided on that. They thought about it again.
As far as I'm, I, I, oh.
When we get to it, maybe we can have a look on them. Brian, do you have anything else for us?
No, the one thing that I would say too is you can, you know, kind of use that secondary adjustment to navigate the biosolids, presumably if you're funding that with, you know, a mix of reserves and the clean water fund loan, clean water- Clean water fund loan principal likely um would not start. Um until twenty twenty-four at the earliest, but more likely twenty twenty-five. Uh so you would have time to kind of navigate the second approach. So I just wanted to provide that option that if you did want to move forward with the ten percent. For a mid-year adjustment twenty twenty-three, um you could certainly do so and then navigate the additional items. Um at a later date and the impact there um just just as an option, not a recommendation.
Ten percent. I is there a way more of a electric guy than a paper guy? Can you email this to the village board or to the one of? The clerk and. Well, they're nineteen percent, so. Brian, will you be able to put in some of those new numbers as they came out?
Certainly, the if village staff wants to kind of uh give us some of those inputs, um we can implement that and uh re-provide the tables.
Thank you. Bob, I think I'll come back. I'll come back to the shop next week. Okay, don't have anything else. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Moving on to the committee reports, May four, uh the planning commission meeting. Discussion possible approval ordinance A six eight two Z as in zebra, request to rezone one oh five depot street from. R one to um highway commercial C two. Uh if you look on your packet for. Planning Commission meeting, um it was. I believe it was unanimous pass um. Both the new ordinance and. Discussion possible approval conditionally used permitted twenty twenty-three oh one outdoor storage of equipment for Steve of the Benas. That went together here. Have you guys had a chance to take a look at this? Yeah, I looked at it and I also um talked to the community, seemed like the guys were good with everything. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance A six eight two Z request to rezone one oh five depot street from residential. Our one to highway commercial C two.
Brandon, come second. Discussion. Home favor, I I oppose. Here is a discussion possible approval for the conditional use permit twenty twenty-three oh one outdoor storage of equipment for Steve and us, same thing.
I'd like to make a motion for that as well, that's right. Clarify that in what to include the conditions that were recommended by rise plan tradition. Yes, if so, we want to include that.
All right, uh I'd like to approve the conditional use permit for twenty twenty-three dash zero one outdoor storage of equipment for Steve Benas. And all the uh conditions set by the building board and planning commission.
For a second.
Do we have a surgeon?
Any discussion? Home favor. I opposed motion carries. Discussion possible approval of comprehensive plan contract amendment.
I do. I mean, this this was discussed at the planning condition meeting and was recommended for approval. It's for eighty-five hundred dollars um. You know, the first step would be is if you're required to have a public participation plan and get that approved. And so on approval of this amendment, the first thing we would do is is bring a draft. Uh public participation plan forward or uh planning considerations like in uh in June. And then so I I know you have a long, you have a long agenda here, so you know, I don't know how much if you want me to.
If you just throw it up on your screen real quick, Chuck, that would be fantastic. And uh from my understanding, every ten years, the village needs to update its um comprehensive plan.
Right. And the way that you explained it to us at the commission or the planning commission meeting was that this is picking up where. On Streeters. Plan ended, basically, it's the requirements by the state that we still need, but we kind of cut that. Process short, so just this thing up that.
Yeah, I think it was that we cut the process short. I said they didn't have enough people to pull all the all the committees. Know the difference with other substantial, there's playing different. We didn't decide to cut it short.
So, you know, yes, so some of the um. You know, some of the things that we would that are included that were, you know, we incorporate the things that uh. That uh that was put together and compiled by the street of process. Uh but then also, you know, we would be looking for. Um there would be meetings regarding cultural resources, ag transportation, as well as, you know, housing and mountain development, some of those things that. That weren't covered through the process.
Yeah, I think I'm uh when Todd and I probably need to touch here that way, Steve.
Steve Tremont.
See, he kind of explained that to us that, yeah, they would take the stuff from Streeter and make it into a nice little packet. We get a nice little.
Yeah, and that was always the intent of our participation is to take that and we don't bring it.
What's the timeline on?
Basically this year, I mean, it's it's would be the process and then, you know, the October range, I believe there's a. There was a.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve the eighty-five hundred dollar increase? Brandon Chrome, make a motion to approve the eighty-five hundred dollar increase to the comprehensive plan contract amendment. Discussion. Home favor. I I opposed. Motion carries. Public works.
So again, I guess first thing on the agenda, if you if I can type in here, um is, you know, you do have my. My engineer update memo in your packet. I don't know if there's specific questions or you want me to go through anything on it?
And then once you pulled up on your screen.
Okay. Yeah, there are, there are several items on the agenda. Growing wings at project, the bid letting is now May twenty-fifth. Um the curb and sidewalk improve improvements uh was letting at the twelfth and uh. You'll be looking, that's later on your agenda. I'll cover that, the joint replacements. Uh the latest on that is tentatively scheduling that for May thirty-first to the for the pre-construction meeting and then. Uh that project would start in June, the first week in June is what they're telling us. Uh wastewater treatment facilities, you know, uh we have two app the applications later on in the agenda for you. You know, Churchill Road facility reconstruct that project as you're all well aware, it's underway and. They do have weekly construction meetings on Thursdays for for those who want to attend.
Where are those? Any the weekly construction?
Uh right here.
There. This tomorrow was which? Meeting uh at ten, is that here as well?
It's actually Thursday. Show up tomorrow, you'll be early.
Well, it's the seventeenth on your.
Oh, do I? I'm like, that's my, I might apologize for that then. Oh, pre-construction meeting occurred April. So they have weekly construction meetings that happen on Thursday, but that's what I was referring to. Thanks for the clarification. Um and then uh, you know, our office did review the uh dry weller temporary ready mix plan. And uh.
Where's that going?
That would you, uh Danny, that's tip five. You know, south of parent street there on Village Land. Yeah.
Not exactly. But in that area.
Closer to them.
And we've already had a plant. There was a cement plant up there at one time, right?
One time ago for this. Sixty-four road.
Yeah.
But it'll just expedite and have, you know. The, you know, you have a lot of concrete work going in on town that it makes it work well for them to bring.
Bring the D N R good with all that.
They're reviewing it.
Was there any issue brought up by any of the dry weller? Do they have any issues with any of the any of the? So Justin, do you have any, can he, can he speak to?
It's it's actually on the agenda though later.
All right, I can wait. Oh, River Hills pond depth, or so you're going to, we're going to hit up River Hills now as opposed to waiting for like all the other ponds as we were kind of planning?
Well, we're just going to assess the sediment, the sediment depth.
Okay, of River Hill specifically?
Yeah, just to see, make sure that there's a excessive amount of uh sediment.
I'd imagine this because the the water is getting closer and closer to the folks back door out there.
Well, we'll look at that. I mean, there's a, you know. We'll see if it's designed or it's operating as it was intended, you know, with the normal, we'll review the normal, the high water levels. And in comparison, and also the sediment too, because a lot of that is controlled by the outlet, not necessarily the sediment.
Hopefully that new ordinance will help, so. Do you have anything else on your update, Don Chuck, or can we move to number two?
If there's no further questions, please feel free to move on.
The number two, discussion possible approval, temporary conditional use permit, concrete plant Churchill project. Have a representative in much company here, or do you want? Do you want to ask her?
Um it was just uh I'm jumping through like construction. Um the only thing that we talked to Bob Gunther. They said that they would possibly want um like a twenty thousand dollar between. Um behold that until these are damaged to the road. Um I'd like to pause every video. The road as it sits right now, and then just write the contract that if any damages done that, we will fix it back to you guys. Versus having twenty thousand dollars, just kind of doing nothing.
Bob, something that people can get insurance for, get bonded for. Instead of a cash tweet.
Still have insurance coming to us.
Yeah, right, and that's so a lot of this is all in the dot the D O T. Um so we're kind of marrying each other's efforts. Um this conditional use permit needs to satisfy our stormwater. Uh management regulations and then the third layer would be um. Some type of like a damage response if there was damage to our road.
Well, you know, there's road, there's also turf restoration, there's some other things, and that's a lot of. It's easier to keep people's attention if you have cash on hand, so to speak.
Can we make maybe do like ten grand? What's your vote?
Well, I think what it comes down to is when the damage is done after the fact. It's easier to collect it, instead of if you're holding cash rather than starting a collection act. And I realize that it binds up your capital, but escrow in these situations are not uncommon. We need to protect the village and easier to have it than chase it.
Well, you know, if if they don't use parent street and they keep it to one eightieth, you know, in that way.
That's.
You know, that's what we would use, we wouldn't be coming to Old Bridge Street at all. So, you know, to me, um. You know, I I would recommend anywhere from ten to twenty, but you know, that's. The turf restoration should be relatively straightforward, some of those things, but that's. That's, you know, just one of the conditions I I pointed out. The other was, you know, making sure videotaping on our front end, make sure we all understand it, prohibiting trucks near the parent street. And then uh. You know, and just comply with all the requirements that D O T and the D N R as well.
Brandon Chrome, make a motion to approve the temporary conditional use permit for concrete, concrete plant at Churchill project with. A ten thousand dollar um escrow and also the video taping before it happened.
Chris, may I also say?
Question. Home favor. I I opposed. Discussion possible approval of street use. Permit for P suit days. So with this, you're using Lions Club, I'm learning a lot about Bible one C somewhere, but. With the new five oh one C, so I I'm guessing Lions Club, that's five oh one C, that they just use. They have proof of insurance. Uh Brandon Chrome, motion to approve street use permit for P suit days.
That's right, I second.
Discussion. Home favor. I I oppose. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval, staff construction, pay app, number nine. Uh everything within order in here after we had the public works meeting, so Brandon Chrome, make a motion to approve uh staff construction pay app, number nine. You want me to say the dollar amount?
One forty-nine eight nine point two five.
Say that again, Danny.
One hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
One hundred, I can't remember all that. Brandon Chrome, motion to approve pay app, number nine for the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand dollars, nine hundred eighty-nine. Dollar twenty-five, thanks. For a second.
Caleb, Darren, second.
Discussion.
Uh can you just refresh my mind or memory of what this is for?
Yeah, so this is for um, I believe that one specifically was for the some. Well.
With the the change order, primarily stored materials.
All stored materials.
Yeah, okay, and uh pay at ten is is basically the same thing as well.
Thank you. Home favor. I I propose. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval, staff construction, pay app, number ten. Brandon Chrome, make a motion to approve staff construction pay app number ten in the amount of. Thirty-four thousand dollars to thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars.
Donnie Curran, second.
Discussion. Home favor. I I suppose. Discussion uh maintenance parking ordinance on village lots, the one twenty-three, which is the old General Sam's lot. And two thirty-five main, which is the old Ben's and Artie lot. Um I put this on there. Because I I think the lot can use refreshing up. I reached out to Tom Landry, who uh is the wizard with his tractor. And I I made a mistake of not calling him today to see what his bids were, but I asked him to do bids for those two lots. And then uh to see what it'd be like to fix the potholes, and he says you drive down to the village park there. It's it's pretty bad down there. Did you get? I didn't, I spaced it out, I apologize, so we can table that, so or if we can put uh up to a dollar amount. On it just to get him started on something. Is this something? I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's gonna be five hundred, a thousand bucks probably. Um, aren't we? What is the constructions there down the lot over here for the right name turn lane? We don't have a.
It'll be a while, a couple of months.
Okay, but it'll be this year.
Yes.
So what, does it make sense to level off the lot if it's going to be a construction site? Make it look nice for the village, we know it's going to see it this year, everybody drives, still drives by it. Both lots, but I just want to freshen up the town and make everything look a lot better. No, I don't, I don't, and I don't disagree, but I mean, no one's going to drive by it, and then also it's going to be a construction site. People will be parking for pizza days, um they'll probably park there, market fast.
Drive by it.
Coffee shops there. And then the other lot, do we have anything going on in the lot? Really, that market fest can be plus the sportsmen's use it for quite a bit of parking. And I don't think it's, I don't think Tom Leonard's gonna charge us much at all. He's a pretty great guy.
He's, he has reasonable. Yeah. Probably the best of the bad.
What, what would you think would be a decent dollar in order to start with?
Uh, that I just don't know, the scope of money, he's gonna bring gravel on that.
He thinks he won't bring much gravel into either one of these parking lots, but probably down at the village park where those big bottles.
If we could just work with him on some of the hauling, maybe that gets. And Bob, is this something that our public works is unable to do?
Um, we don't have a, a, a back plate tractor, we typically do with the loader bucket, it's some part.
Okay.
We can haul. We can haul in the gravel though, can we?
Correct, sure.
Somebody wanna throw a dollar amount out there and make a motion?
Caleb Garrett make a motion to, uh, approve maintenance. To those parking lots. Um, in the amount of eight hundred dollars.
Second. Brandon beat you to a Donnie, uh, discussion. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then, uh, can we, I know it's not on the agenda, but we had, you have to look at the village park too, because it's one, one ten, it's one. One ten River Road is the address for that. Uh, discussion possible approval concert, no parking signs to be placed by six A M on, at that day. Uh, we had our, kind of our safety meeting with, uh, Live Nation, and, uh, they were very adamant that they have no. Legal authority to put, uh, signs out on, on our public roads, um, and. And other, other places, all the, the public works people put them on.
Have we put them for?
Well, we really haven't worked with Live Nation, they have.
Not, not with Live, not with Live Nation, I'm talking about in the past, prior to this, have, has, I, I've seen. I've seen signs in the village, no parking on village streets during concerts in the past. Now, I, they haven't really put the stakes out or anything like that, but they put all these like foldable signs right in the middle of the. The deal, so, you know, I mean, what, what, what is our responsibility there?
Our responsibility is whatever we make it, Danny.
Who's gonna do it then, Public Works?
That, well, Live Nation is saying they can't do it or won't do it because of liability, so.
What, what happened last year, Donnie, was the signs, it fell through the cracks, the signs did get put out, and, and I. Even like Mr. Nemec who's in the crowd is, was, uh, not happy with all the people parking.
Oh, I agree, I heard a lot of, a lot of complaints about that, so, if we can stop that from happening. Um, that's why I'm asking, whose, whose liability should it be on? Is it Public Works? Do you need a motion that Public Works make sure there's? They get put out there, if that's the case, I'll make a motion that Public Works ensures that signs are put out there before they. Uh, the, the, uh, by six A M or by seven A M day of the concert, if that's what. If that's what, uh, it needs.
Uh, Brad.
In the past, when they used to have concerts, Florid Park would put them out, take them down, but that was in the condition used permit, but they had to put them up. Had the garbage picked up by a certain time the next day, took them down when the concerts were done. So if United Nation or Live Nation doesn't wanna do it, that's fine, let the village do it, but at their cost. We shouldn't be paying for them to come in here and have concerts using our city, we either the concert site or Live Nation to pay the village to do it. And that's what it's been down in the past, that's what was in the condition used permit in the past.
The new conditional use permit is like. A third of the size of what it used to be.
I understand, and they changed, but you know what, we used to always get informed about the changes, and I've never seen anything until you and I talked a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with you, I think for the going forward, you should have something in there. But for this year. For this year, I think, uh, I think we're kinda stuck with it. Um, I know Public Works have put out the ninety four or whatever too, while the guys are on, it's not likely to get up at five or something.
I have a sense of, uh, the scope. How many signs are we talking?
I asked, uh, Chief Treppcheck on, I asked him to put a map together. Um, and count exactly how many signs. And I don't know, he hasn't got back to me yet, but Live Nation is. Making the signs and we just have to put them on, but. I'm gonna say forty, uh, probably not even, but.
Uh, you know, I'd like some parameters to work with, just to be honest. It's, it's, we've never done this before, um. So I don't know the level of detail they're expected out of us, and I, the department will work. We'll, we just really wanna understand, because those questions were brought up, and it was a sixth of the morning on a Saturday concert. Or what? You know, it's, it's just to put out signs and it's, it's fairly abstract to understand it.
Yeah, the chief will get us, uh, as soon as he gets me the, the map, I'll send it to you.
Isn't public safety, um, aren't they the ones that kind of are determining where the signs are? Would that fall on some, uh, you know, on them to, to put them up, because I, I think they can. Kind of build back to Live Nation for some of that work then, can't they?
That question came up during our meeting, and they're like, you know, all the revenue we bring in, we pay taxes, we do this, we do that. Um, they, they were pretty adamant that it was, it was our responsibility. And, uh, like I said, I think, uh, it's not in this year's conditional use permit, but going forward, I think it's something we should address.
So the, do they pay for police officers and?
Yeah.
They do, they, they do.
Increase the fee.
It's the village, they pay the village as it's done, so whatever hours the police officers work, they reimburse it.
So they, they pay the, they pay the money for the costly, for the police, but not for the public.
They should, this was the first time they requested that, so they should pay. For the two hour call out or. However many hour call out that public works sample have.
They could put it open ninety four at the end of the shift.
They're done at four o'clock on that.
They could be out at four o'clock. I tried if you didn't.
And remember, we talked about it, maybe doing some sort of a thing for the residents. Like if they were parking on the street.
Yeah, that's what we used to do before, um, residents or businesses could get, uh, like a little half sheet of red paper that says. I'm parking in the two hundred block of, or one hundred block of Spring Street or two hundred block of Spring Street, put the person's name on it. It goes in the, the dash of the window, um, if people come into, um. Sportsmen's, they could have a stack, uh, to give out to their customers, so they're not getting towed, and. It'll, uh, it'll be good for the businesses and good for the residents. And then, keep the concert goers in the parking lot, and this year Live Nation is not charging at all for parking. And it probably won't ever in the future too, so it should keep people parking in the lots they're supposed to and not on our, our streets. That's good.
Until that one, that everyone's parking on the streets was free as well?
Uh, anybody wanna make motion?
Seems like we got several things to figure out, so. Does it make sense? Committee to figure this out? Or?
When's the first concert? June twenty third. So we can table this to next month's meeting, and at least maybe we'll have a plan, and we'll have to vote on it at next month's meeting. That, that works, and then I can maybe try to, uh. And I can try to, uh, get them into. Paying them for our services.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
And you're gonna want him to come in Police Department and do where and how many signs.
Yeah, the, the chief's working on a map, and then he was in that, that safety meeting.
Coordinate that with Public Works. Get them up the day before, you know, and it'll say no parking on certain dates, certain hours.
What's that, Donnie?
I make a motion, we table this till next month, we have all the information we need, and we can act on it then.
Your second?
Sir.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Street use permit Somerset United discussion possible approval. And since Caleb and I are on, uh, that nonprofit board, we are going to stay out of the discussion and voting. Alright, um. Based on that, uh, I guess I'll start the conversation. Um, do we have a, so, um, out of the public works meeting, there were some stipulations that came out of it. One was that, uh, five oh one C was gonna be obtained, is that? May I ask you a question?
I guess I would, I would wonder, what's the purpose of the five oh one C three?
Would, do you have to have one to, do you have to have one to request a permit?
No, you know, that only is for tax purposes and whether donations are gonna be deductible for the people. That have donated, but the organization themselves.
Okay, alright, got it.
Insurance has been provided?
No.
Yeah, and the other, that was, I was gonna say, the other stipulation was that insurance was gonna be figured out as well. And I don't see insurance on here. That has not been figured out. It's, it's not yet, okay. Um, and then the other thing that I thought, so, um, I like the idea of market fest, I think it's a good idea, um, the issue, the. The issue I have with it is there's a lot of construction going on down in that area this time of year, we're gonna be, um, well, specifically just this year. Um, so we're gonna be tearing up the curbs, we're gonna be tearing up the, the one lot, we're gonna be working on the bridge, there's gonna be a lot of construction equipment down there. Um, I'm just kinda worried with all the stuff that's gonna be going on down there this year, that maybe the time's not right for that. And then also based on the comments that were brought forth by the business owners, um. I don't know if it's, if we have it set up the way we want quite yet.
So, any thoughts, any thoughts into the fact of maybe moving it to the village, uh, village park during this construction season? Because we're gonna be ripping up all the, you know, the, the, the sidewalks and everything down there, and then we could. Would that make more sense to maybe close, I know eventually it would be nice to bring it back there like you guys were originally. You know, brainstorming, but, um, I, I'm concerned about the construction too.
Stu and I were talking, we're worried about the waters well, and the bathrooms, the restrooms, uh. And we were talking, they have them at the village park, where are they gonna go if it's next to us?
Had, uh, the, um, uh, car, uh, shows at Village Park before, and that worked out rather well. So, you know, I mean, if, you know, at least trying it there and seeing how much energy you get towards it. And maybe bring it back after we get nice new sidewalks that people can walk on.
Yeah, and then also that would mean, so we wouldn't have to close this street either. So, um. That was all the comments I had on it, did anyone else said, Chris, Chris, the Chris's, did you guys have any?
I want it to happen, but I don't wanna negatively impact the business owners. So I'm not sure that location is perfect.
Um, I mean, is there a way to keep it that way, but instead of having beer tent and whatever, I mean, the, the companies like. Sportsman, Rodney Boom, and, uh, Kennies. And all funds would be able to. Sell. And not have like a beer tent or, or stay.
I don't know, is it? Or is that moving ahead on the agenda?
Okay.
Sorry. I do, I'll think. Um.
Yeah, just, a long time ago, P suit base was downtown. And what they would do is that we closed two hundred block of carpet streets, and I don't know if that's a viable option that solves some problems. Some of the concerns, so.
Um, I think based on that and the discussion, um. Uh, Brandon Chrome, I. Will make a motion that we do not approve the street use permit for Somerset United.
Just check that second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Oppose.
Me.
Motion carries. Discussion possible approval twenty twenty three street improvements project bid award.
So.
What did you hear, Donnie?
I have three, three eyes, one name, two same.
Pardon?
Did you vote on the last motion?
I voted I.
Okay, thank you.
So regarding the twenty twenty three street improvements, um, we did receive bids on the twelfth. And, but I've been talking with, uh, Bob, you know. My thoughts is maybe wait a month toward this. Just to get an opportunity to, you know, allow people to digest the numbers, you know, you know, just make sure that we have a full understanding of. Of, you know, the elders' analysis and everything else, so that, that would be my recommendation, there's no taking action. You, you know, from, from the, from the bid letting you have, contractually, you have sixty days to award it, so you do have time here to. To think through this.
Are we talking sidewalks now?
Yes, we are, Danny.
I just wanna go on the record to say I am not in favor of, 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 of the, that proposal of alternatives on there. And, uh, I, I think at eighty five thousand, uh, when we estimated that, uh, it was only gonna be about sixty to remove that island. Is, uh, wasteful, uh, spending of money, the other numbers kinda came in pretty, pretty good, they were under budget. Of underestimate, I should say, they were still over budget, but, um, I'm not, I'm not, uh, in favor of spending eighty five thousand dollars. Taxpayers money to remove out a, an island.
Sure, understood.
Do you wanna table it to the, uh, Public Works meeting, or just the next village board meeting?
Well, it was, it could go, it could be discussed at the next Public Works meeting, and then, and then.
Like, next question. Is that gonna slow up our, our timetable of getting this completed yet this year?
It'll get done this year.
So on this, I did notice Chuck, we are typically, we, we don't get this many, um. Bids, are we, are we, is the market starting to loosen up a little bit in our favor? Has the supply chain most finally stopped, has the work starting to slow down a little bit, or starting to do some government projects, or? What's your feeling?
So you want me to jinx the whole construction industry, huh?
I mean, if it helps us.
No, uh, you know, I guess from my perspective, things are starting to be a little more predictable and normalized.
Okay.
You know, um.
So if we wait a little bit, does it maybe get better, or?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think that, but you know, we're kind of understanding where. Things have had a level dot, you know, it was just, it was a big jump, and now it's kind of that staying up there, but, uh, I don't, it's not gonna go down.
Never goes down.
Never goes down, so, you know, I, I think these are, you know, reasonable bids, and, and, you know, I think, uh, you know. We recommend you go forward, there were, um. I, I could, I could share my screen again, but there were four. There, you, you have them, so, yeah, there was a. Certainly some alternates to be considered, and, and, you know, basically there was proposal A. Which included, uh, you know, all the, the curb and sidewalk rehab portions of the project for Main Street and Spring Street. And then that proposal A one. Uh, alternate one, that was the, uh, island, I'm gonna repeat that, uh, Donnie was referring to. And then proposal B was the right turn lane on Spring Street here. And then for, for both, uh, B, alternative one. For that portion is some additional milling and some, uh, striping that's necessary out. Out in front of, or in and around that intersection, so, if you go look at it, it's pretty good though. Oh, yeah, any other thoughts?
And the goal is to have all this finished. Really, we're not in a huge rush to do this because we're not gonna do this until everything else is done downtown soon.
So it's all gonna be done. Um. Continue, you know, concurrently.
Okay, when, when should the project start?
Well, um, if it's awarded next month, you know, we pass around contracts and everything else, and then it will, you know, presumably there's, it would be, uh. Yeah, it was starting July, you know, shouldn't take too long to do it.
Saying a motion to move. The two thousand twenty-three street improvements project bid award to the next month's Public Works meeting. Brandon Chrome second. Discussion.
I got one thing, question. Uh, what is the, the, the rationale of, uh, you know? Holding this off when it all come in under, under, uh, you know, your estimates, with the exception of that, that island proposal? Everything was twenty percent less than your estimates on that.
No, we, we take all of our projects and combine them, they're quite a bit. More expensive, so, um, we're actually being pretty considerate of the budget right now and future debt capacity. So, we haven't had any opportunity, we opened these bids last Thursday, right?
Yeah. We just wanna make sure. Ellers has a full picture and, and you know, we all are understanding, we go into this eyes wide open, so.
How long do the, do the bids stay good for?
Sixty days from letting, so, you know, May twelfth, June, July, so.
And any other questions, Donnie?
So that's gonna be, uh, entailing the conversation about some of the stuff with the, the bridge work too then, or? Or, uh, that we need to get all that information, Ellers, or, I mean, what other work are we, are we? What other cost are we looking at that we need to, uh, talk about, cause I thought all of this was kinda pretty budgeted and proposed with Ellers already? We just, uh, we just weren't gonna accept a, a million dollar bid last year, uh, and that this is, this is all within budget, is it not?
For this project, yes, I'd say that's accurate, but our, our bridge project. Was a little high, Churchill, um, came in.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, but, uh, so we wanna, we're gonna talk about all of them, is that what it is with Ellers, the, the bridge project, the Churchill project? And this one, because this one come in, uh, under budget, uh, you know, from what we had talked about, but because we're high at Churchill. And the other ones, that's when we wanna kinda go back and look at all the numbers, is that correct?
Yep, and then if we want, this doesn't encompass all the curb and, and sidewalk repairs, it's a, it's a portion of it, where we thought. Well, this is a good spots to stop, um, we could consider, after talking with others, to add more of that work and, you know, forget the, the, the island, and maybe we. It's a better value to put. Improvements. You know, farther down Spring Street, farther up Main Street, so. It's, it's a. It's a difficult project to. Start and stop.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of Monday, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking, cause. You know, you're not replacing all of it, so you'll be, okay, are we gonna stop at this panel or do that extra two panels? You know, we're gonna saw cut here, we're gonna take a little bit more, so it's, it's a challenge, and we just wanna make sure we're fully on board and understand as best we can. Before we award this thing and. Get over the end of our skis a little bit.
All favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion possible approval temporary directional signs to businesses during construction. Did. Did I hear correctly that you were having some signs made up for that purpose?
I've been up.
Yeah, you're already up, I think. Just, uh. Like the road closed signs, right? No, they got signs that by La Granger. Yeah. Yeah. I went to Dairy Queen this morning and there was nothing, they go right by.
They're right on the road.
On the road.
Yeah, stay off your phone, Mike.
Well, he was on his phone. Fair enough, fair enough, I did.
So, as part of this discussion, this is on the side of the river, and how to brainstorm something there.
You know, even like payframes or something in the middle of the road, like still open for business or. I just work on getting those signs out on that side of the road, appreciate it, I'm sure the business can do as well.
Is it possible to do anything out of? Is that exit six? Like, right on the exits? Um, I can certainly have that discussion with the D O T, it's just, I, I was afraid we were gonna have. That and then have individual business signs. And it becomes too busy and I don't know what's going on with that side. Uh, so if we just said, you know, downtown businesses with an arrow, maybe that helps, and. Job local or. I'm up for any ideas, so if you think of some.
I make a suggestion, um, that is there a way that we could possibly give them the, you know? The website and have, do an update on our website or something like that of which, which ones we can get to, or how you can access, or you could say east of the river. Uh, access, you know, this way and west of the river, this, this side, you know, exit six, east side of the river, exit, uh, whatever it is, uh. West side of the river, think, kinda thing.
Website.
Did you see that on our website, Donnie? It's on the face of the website.
That's a new picture, we changed the website aside.
I'll pull it up.
That's the first time I've ever seen anything change on the website.
First time ever.
But if we put, if we put a sign up, you know, pointing them to that is what I was saying.
There it is, open for business. It's working, Andrea.
I have nothing to do with that.
Oh, okay, well, just take the credit, take the win.
Or Bob or Johnny.
We don't need a motion or anything there, right, so we can move on to public safety? We, uh, may a meeting report, uh, discussion possible approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four license applications. Like to try to lump this all together. Um, make a motion to approve. Letter A. Through letter M. And then. Take out. Letter E, F. And L, or. Other consideration, because I, uh, have a conflict of interest with those. Anybody, second? I have one question, um. On my computer.
I, are we still waiting for an auxiliary questionnaire? Yes. For dicks?
Mm-hmm.
So that clearly, thank you then. Thanks. Um, and.
Oh, with the, um.
I have one. The question I have is. Are you Dr. Chris?
Um, I was back again.
Oh, sorry to be nervous.
Very bad.
Um, so per section seven dash two dash nine, approval of denial of their licenses, no license shall be granted for operation on any premises or with. Any equipment for which taxes, assessment, forfeitures, or other financial claims of the village are delinquent and unpaid. Um, so for Kennedy's, uh, the owner of that is Mike Kappers, and he has an outstanding bill with the village for tubing licenses. Um. So based on, based on the way that this is written, do we have to? Deny that? Or? How, how does that? Uh, yes, it is two separate LLCs, but he is the. Um. Liquor license agent for that as well, and that's under his name.
I think you can include it just cause it's two separate LLCs.
Okay. And, uh, Andrea, everyone else in here is in good stead, as far as. Taxes assessments.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, I just, anybody make a motion?
You made a motion.
Well, I made a motion, anybody second motion, sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Question?
This has all been, I just wanna, uh, confirm, this has all been approved and, uh, by, and recommended approval by the Public Safety Committee, correct?
Right now, I forgot.
Yeah, except for M, which they're, uh, they need their auxiliary form filled in, so we could do a contingent on. On them getting it, uh, turned in.
Would we have a separate motion, which is for M or that?
Well, we need M, we really need M. E and.
I would pull out, you know.
Pull out M as well, yeah. And then the other ones for General Sam.
A through D and G through K.
Well, I'll. I'll take out my motion. And put a new motion, uh, for discussion possible approval for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four license applications. A through M, but remove, we'll talk specifically about letter E, F. L and M.
So it's really just A through B and C through.
Okay, when I said.
Yeah. You were right now. Do a second?
Uh, second.
I'll say.
Discussion.
I have just a question for the patient, so. Again, it is my clarification for the future because of sense of precedent, so if, uh, money's ruled by. A company's village. The company doesn't pay, the principles are all the same, you just started dipping LLC and then you're fine for your licensing, so what? What teeth you have to have that as part of your ordinance, if it's not enforceable? This company could have a ponder, some same ownership, attorney just says it's mine, the different LLC. Then it's okay, so we'll just start new LLCs.
Well, this, it's a new LLC, it's a new company, and we're applying for the license, not the other company.
Just my clarification for me, cause this is setting the precedent for tomorrow, so another bit. Things I've been involved in, if the ownership is the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, that was Carrie, uh. You guys can go letter E. Class B beer and class B liquor renewal for General Sam's. Their motion?
Like make a motion to, for the class B and beer and liquor license renewal for General Sam's tank and beer gun permits for General Sam's.
Brandon Chrome second. Discussion. All favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. And going to letter L, class B and class C wine license application for Kennedy's Cafe.
Uh, Caleb, gonna make a motion for a class B beer and class C wine license application. Kennedy's Cafe LLC.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Here is, uh, M. All opposed. What's up? All opposed, aye. Uh, the letter M, class A beer, class A liquor license renewal for Dick's Fresh Market.
Wasn't there a contingency on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris is gonna make the motion.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the class A beer and class A liquor license renewal for the express market, contingent upon receiving the auxiliary questionnaire. You wanna set a date on that? To receive it by or? Uh, well, their new, their existing one expires June thirtieth, so prior to June thirty. Prior to June thirty.
Do a second?
Donnie Current second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, please make sure you have discussion after following, uh, a second.
Discussion possible approval twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four liquor license agents. Uh, we might as well just go one by one. Uh. Make a motion to approve Tracy Bottelton for the Speedway. Brandon Chrome second. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion for Ryan Vanas for M L Vanas Inc.
Just a second.
Discussion, all favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion for Rebecca Newman, Apple River Liquor LLC.
Just a second.
Sorry, do we need that?
Uh. We'd like to make a motion to approve Rebecca Newman from, for Apple River Solutions LLC. Brandon Chrome second. Discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Make, make a motion to approve Alison Howard for Quick Trip Inc.
Just a second.
Discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Uh, somebody else can make this another motion, some, Randy Crowe, make a motion to approve John Montpetit, General Sam's Incorporated.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain, like to make a motion to approve Pat Ring. And Patrick and Susan Ring LLC.
Just a second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Like to make a motion to approve Edward Physikus with M A G Inc.
Thank you, current second.
He Jay.
M A J, thank you. Discussion? Uh, Donnie, I think, I don't need, Donnie got it.
Aye.
Discussion and then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve Eugene Lawyer from Summer Star Entertainment LLC. Brandon Chrome second. Uh, discussion?
Where is that?
That's, uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and I'll, uh, stay for the next one.
I'll make a motion to approve Mike Kappers for Kennedy's Cafe LLC.
Donnie Current second.
Oh, any discussion? Um, yeah, I just don't. I think based on my reading of seven dash two dash nine, I don't feel comfortable approving this. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I abstain. I'd like to make a motion to approve Doug Reinhardt for Dick's Fresh Market. Brandon Chrome second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion possible approval, IRB park license to use Village Park, the river's edge. Question on this one, um, is Mike Wong is a computer company that he had to abstain or he had to refuse himself in his role?
Uh, he, he can. Um, I don't think it's mandatory, but you know. If the perception doesn't like it.
Boy, right now, I don't even have a tubing or gambling business, so it's, I'm gonna have a competing business, but then, well.
Yes, sir. Uh, I apologize, I think we kinda skipped over this, or I missed it, uh, we're working at this for the Dick's Fresh Market. The signature of the agent isn't on there for accepting by agent.
Oh, they came in and, yeah.
You got it? Oh, I just wanna make sure it works good, no?
Yeah. Thank you.
I apologize.
There's a couple of them that came in after.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh. For the IRB license, they use so Village Park, I remember that.
Second. Discussion.
I have one question, uh, now. Are the tubes getting picked up across in Village Park, uh, where they normally were, or are they getting picked up? Behind, uh, the, where they pick up for the buses right now, and how is that going to, to work? Do they have a path or something down there that they can run up? Cause I walked that trail and it didn't look like it was that. Yeah, that, that, that bad of a, of a, a road for them to be hauling them up or walking them up or rolling up the tubes, or how is that gonna work?
Steve? Well, I had proposed to the Public Safety. Was to put the wagons that we haul the tubes back. Um. That would be on the other side of the river, the east side of the river.
So they'll have to drag their tubes over.
Bring their tubes off across the footbridge.
Yeah. You didn't think there's enough room to have those big wagons down there and up and down the hills?
Well, we wanna make sure of that, if there isn't, then we're just having. Continue to carry the rest away and just leave them, cut the tubes down. But we wanna make sure that there's. E D S S and rail for the emergency. Yep, we won't block any rail.
So you'll be, so they'll be, basically the, the wagons will be down and being loaded with the tubes on the, uh, west, southwest, uh. West of the river on the south side of the bridge, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then they'll, they'll be taking. And then they'll, they'll be taking a path up and coming through where the, where the pickup buses are, and then going back to uh, Rivers Edge?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
You bet.
Anybody make a motion?
Uh, Chris made a motion.
No, I was just waiting.
Chris and Brandon.
Oh, sorry, thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval temporary class B beer retailer license P soup days for the Somerset Lions.
Uh, motion?
Josh, I'd like to make a motion.
Right, from second. Discussion.
Did anybody reach out, I'm sorry, I know I'm not supposed to just go, but um, at public safety, somebody was going to find out the hours.
Cool.
For their license as a store, I think.
Was that, that was on the application?
They dragged.
Has the date, yeah.
He's the applicant though, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, can we just make it consistent with whatever his application was for last year? Makes sense. We need to. No discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Both. Motion carries. Request for open containers during Somerset Community Market Fest or Somerset United. And since Caleb and I are on the board, we will. Refrain from discussion.
Over the class B beer and wine license for Somerset United.
I don't think they're eligible for it anyway.
Yeah, we're uh, we're, haven't been.
They've been around for six months.
Okay. So.
Request for open containers during Somerset Community Market Fest, Somerset United.
I have a question. Uh, is, is there any thoughts as to like we were talking about, about that being moved over to? Over to uh, uh, Village Park, and would that be something you'd want to see there, or do you wanna wait until? Um.
For just around the painter, it's not.
Well, I, I, I have no problem with moving it to that other lot and not blocking the streets and doing that, I just uh. My thing would, I don't know how the businesses are gonna. Really profit if they're in the across the street, that's my own thing.
Can we have businesses participate without blocking the street? Maybe have the open container license applied to that area, but not block the street up, so people can walk. And would you be willing to participate and be willing, if people came in with their three dollar cup, would you be willing to fill it up with beer?
For free? If you buy the cup.
They buy, they buy the drink, whatever it is too, yeah.
Okay, so we can have five cups. Yes?
No.
No? You would.
You buy, okay.
For five dollars and then they use it or whatever.
And then just get refills for.
Either at their tent, the beer tent, or your place or our place.
Okay. I mean.
I'm not for that.
No. You'd rather people come in, sit down, stay there?
No, I'd rather it be just us get to do it and not them, cause they don't need the. If this is a nonprofit.
Sure, I'm gonna say, where's the revenue going for the cup?
Exactly.
I don't.
Well, there isn't much revenue for a three dollar cup, but the.
Yeah, but there's more revenue than for us without a cup, if they can come into our place. And just have like an open container like. I don't know how other businesses in other cities do it, if they block something off and they can go bar hop and with open containers. I just don't think it's good for her and I, and I said for you. If there's someone else selling it there when the streets are shut down and the bridges shut down and we have no business right now. It would be better for us if they could just buy it with us. And walk around, or do it at the Village Park, like I said, and they got the bathrooms and everything down there and water. And if they wanna come down, then they can, and nothing's blocked off.
Yeah, and, and that's what we've talked about, and was moving it over there when I'm buying with it, the. The part where uh, the uh. Somerset United getting the, the beer and wine license. We skipped over that, cause we haven't been an entity for six months, so. As of right now, that's not even a thing, the item that we're working on right now, Ed, is uh, just an open container, just to pass that, uh, from. That Saturday of pea soup days and the Thursdays would be from four PM to ten PM.
For her and I?
For the open container.
So they could walk back and forth across the street with open containers?
As long as they get the wristband from you saying they're twenty-one plus, and then they have the, the right cup.
Even if it moves down to the Village Park?
If that's where you guys want it.
Well, I don't want downtown blocked up, we have hardly any business, Mike. You wanna do this during our business hours, how about do it from eight to noon or something where you're open? And then see how that works for you, I, I don't get. Closing it off or anything, I can't afford to lose any business, I, we already explained it to you. I, I don't know how much clearer to tell you. I think the Village Park is perfect, pea soup days, if they wanna come down, they come down, car show, if they wanna come down, they come down, right? I mean, and nothing's blocked off.
That's what we're talking about, the street.
Okay.
Use permit didn't get approved, and then we're talking about moving it to Village Park.
Okay. And if you guys wanna pass the open container deal, or do something with a cup then that way. I guess as long as the residents are, you know, how that works, don't care, I guess we're fine with that part, right?
I mean. Um. Hypothetically, you would buy a cup for three dollars and then. Have a cooler in the woods or in your truck and then you just keep refilling it.
Right.
I'm not, I mean, I don't know if it will bring a lot of business to, you know, with the cup, you know, buying a cup and then. The cup thing, I'm not sure it would benefit us, I mean, it's a good thing to think of, but I don't know that would. I don't know how that would, um, we've never tried it before, but um, I could force, I could see that. Um, you know, the cup gets refilled a lot. By other means, rather than buying alcohol from, you know, the sportsmen's or the rendezvous.
What other places do is they'll buy the cup back at the end of the night for two bucks and then resell it later on or whatever.
Okay, I, I, yeah, and I don't know how that all works, I guess I don't know all the details of the planning.
Who's buying the beer then?
Look, you have to get through a retailer.
See, I love the car show.
Beer license, then there wouldn't be any beer at the market fest, so they wouldn't be walking from the market fest to these establishments.
So they won't have one that creates a tension, is that the deal?
Correct.
Correct.
Someone else could. Your interior apply for it, it could be the. The ATV truck could wanna do it, or the lions might wanna do it, or the. Food pantry or some other civic group could apply for one and be part of that festival, it's just that. Uh, this organization can't, because they're not holding that percentage share to do it.
But I, I guess that's what we're asking, that, um, whether it be, um. Anybody, anybody apply for it, we, we're asking it not to be approved, simply because. Like I said, business is bad enough without, you know, you know, having another entity selling. You know, drinks.
Right next door to you.
Yeah.
So, so the question really is, uh, you know, in front of us right now, uh, whether or not. We allow open containers for a specific period of time, and it would be utilized between the businesses. Affected, which would be uh, uh, sportsmans and uh, rendezvous, correct? Uh, because they'd be the only ones open during that.
But their hours, that's not their hours. Well, they could, yeah, but he wasn't talking about that right now, but that's fine, yeah, sorry, Johnny.
No, I, I, I just, I'm, I'm asking, if, if that's, if that's what we're talking about, i- if the, if the owners. Uh, you know, of the two businesses, uh, don't wanna entertain it, you know, then. Then we can table it until we talk about it a little bit more, and, or if they wanna entertain it and try it, we'd be willing, I'd be willing to make a motion, but. I'd, I'd like to get some feedback from them, if they, they wanna try something like this, and if it doesn't work, they can always come back to us next month or whatever. And say, guys, it's not working, let's uh, let's uh, let's can it. Uh, it's really, the, the intent was, I think to try to, you know, promote the businesses more than hinder them. So just so you know, I think that's what the whole intent was, I, I, otherwise we can table it and move on.
I mean, I, I think that, um. Maybe just the way it was conveyed to us, uh, or the way that I understood it, I mean, the way that I understood it was. Um, you know, you buy a cup and then there's gonna be someone else selling it, but. I'm not opposed to this at all, I mean, I think it, it, you know, it might be a, a good thing as long as, but I. I'm not sure I, the cup, when you would send, you buy it for three dollars and you sell it back for two dollars, I'm not. Understanding all the details of how this is laid out or how this is to work.
Chris, do you think it should go back to public safety because um, Joel was. Only one to limit. The open containers to the two hundred block of Main Street. If it moves, if it moves to Village Park. That's more.
Well, this is for the dark pea soup days. June ten. So you guys have a problem with the open container portion of this?
No, I still.
Unless the residents are fine with that part, is they'll be walking from the Village Park, and I don't know. If people are throwing cans and bottles and what's gonna happen, you know, that part.
Well, I feel like if you do open the containers as well, somebody can still have their own beer and run. Right, your place, or their car, grab a beer, go to the rendezvous, or vice versa.
Right, and that's what we understand.
I mean, I don't know.
They've modeled it off of River Falls, they do a lot of.
And everything's like always enclosed, so is it not?
It works really well.
Like when they have bear bares and stuff, everything's enclosed, that's where you drink.
The intent is to get people to town to, to go to your businesses.
Right, no, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a great intent, yeah.
But I think there, it sounds like you're good with the vegetables and stuff like that, that, that doesn't compete directly with your business, like people selling honey and. Or little charm bracelets or something, or crap, that.
Yeah, or.
Doesn't matter, but the beer is.
There, you know, if that helps us down there, cause then they'll walk back and forth for that. I don't have a problem with food trucks, I think that would be a neat thing, I had that in my head before, I wanted to do that. Um, because that just brings more people, and then they'll come to us for a drink or something, you know? The only part we have a problem with is we want the drinking part, and we didn't want, because if we have to give up our bathrooms, our water and everything else. Then we should get something out of it, unless Mike wants to open Kennedy's and put restroom right over there.
There was gonna be four bodies put over.
No, I'm just saying, though.
There was gonna be. I'm fine with moving it. Anybody wanna make motions?
I need to need to go back to public safety.
I'm gonna have to set differently.
Yeah.
I don't think I made it in time.
I don't have a special meeting.
Yeah, cause then we can come down, or we can discuss it, and at least we'll all be on the same page then.
There's a liability to go in it, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I. I can't vote on this right now, myself. I think we need to go back to the public safety and talk more. Well, if we can't make it, I mean, I, I'm okay with having a special meeting, but it's extra, um, it's extra months. And I think it would be nice to know to the location, so I think that'll play a big factor in my decision. So if it's on Village Park, yeah, I'm gonna go, so, but if it's downtown here, perfectly fine with it, me personally, so. Cause the business stays.
You're good with it, you're good with it.
Well, it taking place in the park, now people are walking from Village Park all the way downtown with an open container, I'm not okay with that, so. But that's me personally, obviously, so I think locations would play a factor in my decision making, but I would like to see it stay downtown somehow, some way. But if that's closing, you know, Hudson Street, whatever the case is, if they propose that for the car show. I'm perfectly fine with that, or Garfield, awesome, Main Street, no go for me, so, but yes. That's my decision.
Who do you say was that, from leaving them for this?
Well, we wanna be able to get it done before P soup days, yeah.
Would have to be a special meeting of the airport, not just uh.
I'd love to hammer up the details, I'd, I'd much rather see it moved than just this not happen.
Well, and so would we.
We're definitely.
Yeah, we want to break the business, we want people here, right?
Yes.
So. Be a really fun way to do it. But then maybe, so I'd say maybe let's not approve that, um, the open container right now, until we get, we need more parameters.
Correct.
Make a motion, make a motion, table the uh, table the uh, request until it's, and refer it back to uh. Public safety for further review.
Second, Caleb Garn.
I, I think, I think, Donnie, if we go, like Andrew said, it would have to go to a, a special meeting to the full board.
Well, would public safety uh, wanna review it first and kinda uh, get their two cents before it gets, I mean, they could have a special. Meeting for that too, can't they?
What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that's what the board wants to kick us back to public safety. Yeah, and, and where are the others, uh, gathering is gonna be? Whether it's in the park or whether it's downtown, and then I would certainly make a special meeting with you. Yes, if the object and. And editorializing a little bit, but if the, if there's no traffic downtown now. Businesses aren't getting much business, if you bring down a bunch of people, even if they don't get a hundred percent of that business, they got more than you have. So, so.
Right, okay, number one action. Again, we'll get a special. Special meetings.
Maybe we can do that all on the same day, maybe, like uh.
Back to back.
Yeah.
Feel like that.
Yeah, you had a vote.
Discussion. All favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Hey, um, I, I'm gonna ask them, I know this is new business, but I think they're good to build an inspector, or do you guys wanna sit all the way to the end? Or do we wanna move the building inspector up to the beginning?
That's just one more thing then.
Okay, alright, okay. And uh, the committee appointments, I uh, I haven't had much time to spend on that, so. Make a motion to table that till next month.
You missed.
Okay, discussion possible approval ordinance A. Six eighty-three amending the ATV roads to all Village Streets.
When you're back in, I just have the existing ordinance, cause it wasn't really clear what exactly. I would just think about it.
I'm looking like me, but I think he mailed me the proposed changes for the new ordinance.
Well, the route is under E. Is it just the most of those. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine?
Were we gonna add proof of insurance on there, because I, I, when I listened to that, they, they, we had said that, that's what other. Municipalities usually do is they uh, have a driving license, working nights, and then they bring the insurance, um, is that something? I think that, that was Josh.
Uh, yeah, that's a requirement that we have in North.
Okay.
I think that's, if you're gonna be operating on a street, I think that's at least liability is.
Yeah, right now, we just have, you know, required insurance, that'll be great.
Correct, that's not part of our current ordinance, so.
Was the required be on you? Like, if you get pulled over in your car.
You'd be have to.
You have your phone.
Provide proof of that, yeah.
Or you have to get a ticket and provide it later.
Got it.
Yep.
I don't think that's asking too much, I mean, I think ATVs are more dangerous than cars, and we make cars have. Turns out. The motion.
What are we doing with the road?
Yeah.
For the ordinance.
Say that again, Johnny.
Of the routes itself, we're gonna have that in. Are you looking for the recommended changes, Mike?
What about number nine?
So number one.
We have some, we think different about that, right?
Well, I think.
It's because of the speed limit is fine, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Pass laser going north, forty-five there, so.
So you wanna leave that in?
Right, yes.
Yeah, public safety was like, Somerset's like, ordinance is licensed driver, valid driver. I think, remember, they, and then things on, means of all, probably was that their dad was behind it, so.
Yeah, yeah, uh, in North Hudson, we also have that restriction, so I guess it's, I don't see that age restriction out here where they have to be sixteen or older.
I thought we had like that.
Oh, okay, no, I'm under the age of twelve. That looks like we address that.
Is there? I'm from Michigan.
Sorry.
So in Michigan, there, the, the state has issued regions where this is allowed, are we allowed, or do we know what the state regulation is? Because like in Wisconsin, you can't drive a moped until you're a licensed sixteen-year-old driver. Michigan, you can drive one at age fifteen with no license, no learner's permit. So.
Wisconsin's a little more lenient than ATVs, they allow twelve-year-olds to drive them if there's a parent accompanying them essentially behind them.
On the road.
Yeah, on the road.
Got it.
No, if you're born after nineteen, you're required to get an ATV license.
Yeah, and there's, you know, safety training, licenses in that form too, but they did, they did relax the, the statute to about twelve years.
So. Like, you, you, in Michigan, you can't do that in Detroit, but you can in my hometown, so.
It is, it is municipality by municipality.
They allow each municipality to decide.
Got it.
Cool. Glad I moved there.
And we do that, uh, differentiate between ATV and UTV, so no one under the age of sixteen can operate UTV on our road list.
The motion.
Do you find, um, what the, so this was.
No, I'm not seeing the backup.
Yeah.
Were you just going to allow it? Except for safe thirty-five?
Yeah, oh, village streets.
Number nine, man?
Minus highway thirty-five.
Number nine.
Pathway.
Pathway there.
There any curfew consideration on this? They're a lot louder than cars.
I don't think so.
I believe in North Hudson, it's ten P M. Yeah, I think it is, I, if my memory serves.
What was that, Josh?
Uh, North Hudson, it's ten P M, but I looked up here, we'll take it.
Yeah, don't you? Bunch of kids rip through the meadows on their four-wheelers at all hours of the night. I'd love to be able to go out and yell at it.
Seven point two, get out of here. The best one, you called it.
I hesitated, put that limit on because of people using them to get back from the bars. And obviously, we don't want people driving impaired, but what happens if, you know, it's eleven o'clock, maybe, then you're saying they can't drive back?
They get to walk home, they should probably walk home.
It does address noise levels, um, it actually has a specific decimal, a ninety-six decimal level.
Wow. Way too loud to go very high, I hope.
Um, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there.
So there we die, or we visit.
I don't know if we're in just open, just one.
It's okay, let's get one and then.
I gotta screw it up, I'm good.
So are we okay with modifying this ordinance?
I am.
Yes. Make a motion, Daddy.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, then. If nobody has any other concerns.
The ordinance presented is what the existing ordinance is.
No, as modified, I thought it was, you guys all have one, uh, the modified language there, right?
So sure we have.
Up, we're opening up the, the roads.
All states except for thirty-five.
North laser.
North laser.
That'll be my motion.
Is there a second?
Just real second.
Oh, uh, discussion?
I stand corrected, North Hudson does not have a timeframe.
All is better.
Hi.
Hi.
Both, motion carried.
Better ride.
We went back and forth on that.
Yeah, personnel and finance, uh, discussion possible approval. Arch bridge sign, that, I think, I think Caleb, uh, came up with, you came up with it, right, in the cap meeting?
Yeah.
And then, uh, and then our truck, our engineer from MSA kinda like made us cry, but. You've kinda ruined it a lot. Something that I think is, would cost like sixty thousand dollars, you put a million dollar price tag on it. What was that, the white say?
The one, like a Fresno.
Did we save a million bucks? Seven fifty?
Seven fifty, we guessed it.
Come on, a hundred and twenty dollars.
I don't, uh, I don't. Think I have it.
We better guess at the cap.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Please. Yours is way more expensive than mine.
It's actually made out of concrete. So, that, that, that was kind of the idea, right?
Right, yes.
And I guess some of the concerns, some of the things I highlighted is, um, you know, well, you can see this, but you can see how this, this road flares out, and then off the sidewalk too, the slopes are, you know, very steep, and so you're chasing it down the hill, and so for one thing, it's a, there's a timing aspect, we're hoping to get those footings in this summer yet, but to get a geotechnical out there to analyze, you know, do their work and then write a report, and tell us what we, what we need for a footing, you know, you'd, you know, you'd have a footing that's probably twenty, thirty feet in the ground, plus you gotta get up to the road level, and then, then because of the truck clearances, it would have to be eighteen feet high, and you start adding the distances, and you know, it would be such, so much wider than the Fresno one, that it would probably be a little bit more of a stout truss, and so you start adding up all the costs, and it's pretty much okay, these footings are two hundred and fifty thousand, the, depending on what you decide, you know, could be seven hundred and fifty, you know, and it just, it's, it's a lot, takes a little time, and then in addition to that too, you're doing rehab on a bridge for twenty years, and if you have, if you put that up now, twenty years, you're, when you replace that bridge, twenty, thirty years, you know, you'd have to take that down and work, or work around it, and then you'd have to take it down at that point. And then replace it, so there's cost there too, but, you know, long story short, it's, it's a fairly significant expense.
Do you ever have to do?
Well, you know, I could've told, I could've told you sixty thousand, and then we're two hundred and fifty thousand into the buddies.
We kind of figured a hundred and twenty thousand for chain link fence, that, uh.
Yeah.
It's a little higher.
Can we get the chain link fence for cheaper now?
All right, I won't bring up the chain. Table this to an unknown future date.
I think you just take no after.
Yeah.
Moving on.
I'm just back to the ATVs, you know, you'll have to re-sign. There's an example, North Texas is in here, but you'll have to put up those times.
Yeah, the ATV, uh, Marty Hobbles, and they're, they're.
But you just need to know what you need to do, correct?
Yes, after approval. Discussion possible approval, proper meeting notices and timeliness of meeting packets. Uh, what we hashed out was, what was it, five days prior to the, to each meeting, to have, uh, agendas to us and the meeting packets to us. Right, was that, uh, where was it, six, six days for the agenda, but?
It's been tough for everybody?
Well, we're down on one person, so I manage to recover them. So I'd like to make motion to have, uh, the proper meeting notices, um, put out five days prior to each of the village board meetings or committee meetings.
That's right, I second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Discussion possible approval, create ad hoc committee, the Somerset Champions Group, which, uh, asked, um, trustee Caleb Garn to kind of be the liaison between the Somerset Champions, and uh, we heard their speech and during the public comment. Anybody have any questions?
I think the only discussion that, or question was, is that if we, they're just gonna be, uh, an advisory back to the board then, right?
Correct.
Recommendations and, and, uh, thoughts and, and, uh, brainstorming and, and, and.
Correct.
Yeah, and this is just to create an ad hoc, uh, as needed way of opening the lines of communications, I believe, right?
What, what exactly is ad hoc committee, what is that? So you guys just call them online, set up the bat signal? They, they're in charge of whenever they set up their own meetings, like I, I got on by Zoom on Thursday night or whatever, when their last meeting was, and then Caleb just meets with them, and then we'll have agenda item, whatever, whatever agenda item are pertinent to the champions you'll speak to.
Yep.
Okay, and then we can also get the information in case we wanna zoom in or something like that, if you provide us with that.
Yeah.
I'd like to sit in if I, if I could. Thank you.
I'd like to make motion to create an ad hoc committee, Somerset Champions Group, and, uh, have, uh, Caleb, trustee Caleb Garn be the liaison between Somerset Champions and the village board. Shoot that, Andrew. Discussion, all in favor?
Or discussion.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries, discussion possible approval, email alerts on website.
Yeah, got it set up.
You got it set up?
Yeah.
So people can, uh, now put in their email address to get alerts for anything that we want to.
There.
Oh, yeah, notify, look at that.
You put in your email, and currently, the two things that, um, are set up on there are, um, if there's changes to the contact information, and then the meetings, then it's gonna go, and we can add more, I believe. This just happened today, we, we.
Yeah.
So we're gonna get trained in a little bit on it, but.
Beautiful, and then the. Yes, okay, awesome, thank you.
We can just move on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discussion possible approval, meeting dates and times. Uh, was that for the committee meetings for, 'cause we, oh, it's not, there is no ordinance, correct, you couldn't find it. So public works or public safety is the second Monday of the month. Personnel and finance is the second Wednesday of the month, both those starting at five thirty, and then the, uh.
No, uh, you got, uh, public work starting at five thirty.
Public works at five thirty, uh, personnel and finance starting at seven on the second Wednesday of the month. That's my motion. Discussion. All in favor?
I have opposed.
All right, fire, rescue. What's up?
The Danny bottom.
I say, I.
The fire rescue, uh, is April twenty twenty-three update, responded to twenty-five calls for service, and we're in the village, nine, uh, were medicals, one fire rescue call, nine in the township, but seven medicals and two fire rescue calls, and six auto, eight calls, or should be mutually calls to, uh, in St. Joe. Uh, brings the, uh, total to a hundred and twenty-nine runs for the year compared to a hundred and forty-two at the same time in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the month of April continued to, uh, our slow trend, only one significant fall of a garage fire. Right now, there isn't much going on other than getting ready for the upcoming PC days weekend, we are working with Alliance Club and Chambers for the event as well as putting on our breakfast, but once again, we are currently operating with full, seventeen full members and six probationary members, and as always, you are more than welcome to stop in and say hi at the station when you see someone there. We welcome visitors and are more than willing to give a tour and show you our trucks and equipment. Fire to Travis World. All right, now getting back to new business, committee appointments. Uh, my, I talked to a couple people about that, but I haven't, uh, and I haven't finalized anything, so I'd like to, uh, table that till next month. Get emotional, good. Discussion possible approval of the sewer rate study. And I, uh, I wrote from the Eller's thing, I wrote down the ten percent increase, is that something we wanna try to discuss now? Or it can just be tabled? Who the next public works?
Bob does, yes.
Yeah, right, let's table that till the next public works meeting. Uh, discussion possible approval of building inspector appointment, thanks, John.
Thank you, good job.
I, uh, it's by appointment by village president, and I am looking to change from, um, Mr. Work to, uh, company to, uh, Alkroy inspection.
So, um, I know since, uh, appointed by president and approved by board, I am not on board with changing building inspectors, um. I have done some additional digging on Alkroy after our initial meeting, and I found out they allow you to fill out affidavits uh, without actually being there and performing inspections, uh, the Works facility, the Works inspection does not allow that. Um, I also talked to some of the builders, they said that, um, Alkroy, um, incurs extra costs at the beginning of each permit, roughly two to three thousand dollars. Um, and sometimes they're hard to get a hold of, and they're not always on the spot, sometimes causes issues for them, uh, within the municipalities that they, um, oversee, I've had nothing but, uh, great interactions with Tony, um, and he's actually contacted me, um, the earlier this week, we were talking about some ordinances and stuff like that, so, um, I think he is a great resource to the city, and I'd be sad to see him go. So I am not on board with changing the building inspector.
I did a similar amount of due diligence to Brandon, um, I spoke with three area builders that have, uh, had experiences with both companies. Um, I also went to, um, St. Croix's office down there by Fleet Farm, two different times. Uh, the first time at about ten AM, I believe it was a Monday, uh, to see a sign on the door that said their hours are one to four PM. Went back uh, a week later on a Wednesday at one thirty PM and no one was there still uh, to try and connect with them and sort of sit down and have a conversation with them. Um, one other finding that I feel is important to our citizens here uh, is to apply for a permit or, or get a permit from them, they would have to drive to Hudson. Whereas, uh, our current um fellows, uh, bring them here to village hall where our residents are able to come and get them. That alone is almost enough for me to say stick with what we got, um. Uh, I'm finding no evidence, but, um, our current contractor isn't doing everything they can to help us improve. Um, my vote would be to stick with them.
Likewise, I had a good conversation with these guys and, uh, I also, uh, did my due diligence, well, I did. Did some research, let me rephrase that.
Kentucky, there's.
Yeah, I did some research as well in regards to, uh, the other guys, um, I was not very impressed with what I heard, um, so I will be voting to stick with our current building inspector.
I just have a question. If, uh, the, uh, and this is a question for Paul. Paul, if, uh, if the president appoints somebody else and it's not approved by the board, what happens?
Well, then you're gonna have to appoint another person, or you're not gonna have a building inspector, and that's not a good thing. So you have to move on to, I guess, choice number two, if choice number one doesn't get approved.
And is there anything specific that you can state there that we can talk about with the guys currently present that are currently our building inspectors?
Been here twenty-five years and with, uh, the housing boom that happened in three, four, and five, everybody's still complaining about their homes that were were built, um. I just, uh, I, I think a lot better job could have been done in the past, so people aren't so upset about their homes. And I've, I've just heard so many complaints over the years, I have, and, um, and those builders are no longer, they no longer get. There's things that the building inspector can do, but like with all the problems, like stop issuing permits, maybe on that, making sure that, uh, that everything is done and, and this, I think, uh, in the last twenty-five years, our, our housing, instead of going in the upwards direction, it's been in the other direction. So I just, I'd like to see a change.
I feel like some of our ordinances need to be at your time as well, though, but I mean, some of it could be our ordinance might be a little lax as well.
Well, goes to state building code and everything, uh, getting checked and not getting checked and. Well, I built a home recently in town, um, quality on my house is really good, and my neighbors around me have. They do have a few complaints, all those complaints are being addressed, and we've changed the ordinances to make sure that stuff does not happen anymore. Those changes in the ordinance were actually put in place, uh, working with Tony on that. Um, so not only did he help identify that issue, but helped us put preventative measures in place, so I don't know what else you could ask for of a building inspector. Any other discussion?
Or whatever it's worth, I have properties in multiple areas on the village here, Sierra Way Speedway, Star Per township. This has been Brian, doesn't know me, we probably have crossed paths a few times, but they've always been very professional, they help, help me, you know, so strict rules, and like, no, you know, it's Steve, he can get aside by here, they, they held it. You know, as straight up as I can think anyone could be, so I think they do a good job. I never really met Tony before, so. He, but he does stuff, he's been inspecting some of my stuff already, and my staff all think highly of them.
Do we have to bring this to a halt now?
Well, I guess I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to change from, uh, word inspection to all Kroy inspection.
Well, you're gonna, you'd be nominating, would you not? And it'd be subject to approval. If, if it doesn't get knocked, and you will have to decide whether or not, if I hear from Paul, if you make a, a motion to nominate a new building inspector and it doesn't pass, right, Paul, that, uh, would we not have a building?
One's gonna remain until he's replaced.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Why don't you say we just make, take it to a vote, right?
My, well, we have, you know, is there, is there a second?
You guys did it, huh?
First time I asked for a second, though. No second, then it dies. Right, discussion possible approval, letters to new property owners of distressed properties, weeds, shrubs, and trees.
Okay, well, I did not put this in the back, I think I'm just, it's four pages of, uh, to learn, and that was nine when, her, my, so. Yeah, I tried to put that.
Yeah, um, been driving around town, that's the whole goal, is to make everything look a lot better and feel a lot better around the village. We do have a, a bunch of distressed properties with either weeds or shrubs or, um, this one in particular is, as you're turning on Bruce Larson Way into the school, there's a three acre lot there. Um, according to Gunther, the school now owns that. Preferred property owner that, doesn't that, were they trying to put a, were they trying to put an apartment up there or something? With Shannon Donnelly today, that, that's the that's the email that, that's what I was talking about.
I was assuming, okay, I'm talking about, forgetting the things of this whole time. So, if you go one this here, right here.
That's the one.
Before you get to my bill. That's on, that's on our I'm supposed to, I'm, but I'm a little bit.
Okay, so. The citywide actually owns that lot still, and there was no land swap between the school?
Correct.
Okay, so now Shannon's even confused now, so. Uh, so on that bunch line, bunch list of Albrightson's point of bringing it back to grade and sod and.
That, took that first picture?
Yeah.
No. So I was taking the, the, the view of your camera when you sent those pictures was back.
They.
Yeah, well, there was two different.
That's, that's.
Yeah, there's two different things.
This is the school's property.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to, sorry.
Okay.
And then other.
This needs to be restored, because there's, uh, let's see, it's four inches below curb, and that was part of our agreement.
So there should be one more picture going the other way, scroll down a little more.
And this again, school's property, there's two restored.
And that's gonna get done this week, next week, something like that?
Wait, not Craig, um, he's he's not guaranteeing me anything, he's just saying, we're busy, but.
Albrightson? So, yeah, they're busy, if I need right now. Andrew, if you could scroll up to the top then again?
Um, yeah.
Uh, no, I got. So, uh, one more. The citywide development, what can we do to have them fix that and maintain it and cut it? If you develop something, which is it looks, it's a nicer.
Is that the weed commissioner's jurisdiction?
But only, yeah, but Amy, you sent this one out to the school too, right? He said.
I sent those, you know, having to enter six twenty-five.
And six, six twenty-five and six forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah, just those two, that's all that I remain.
Okay.
That's not six.
Well, scroll down a little more then, do. So this is the, around the retention pond, as you're coming into town on the west side into the meadows, there's a bunch of scrub trees and, and, uh, it used to be well manicured, there were in the retention pond itself, there's twenty-foot tall trees of not.
I think there's a picture of that. That.
Yes. But back in two thousand two, three, and four, preferred, maintained that, and then they even had two, like, fountains. So it was, it was, looked beautiful, it really dressed up the whole, the whole development.
And. It's a correction, we maintained it, the bones were ours.
The bones were ours.
Yes, and we've later found out that this was never deeded over to the village.
So I, I emailed Paul and then a week or two ago to see what we could do, see if we could get that needed over to us, and we moving, is that?
That's the next thing.
No, it's just distressed properties, but. Was.
So that is the next thing.
Yeah, so.
As far as I know, it's still in the builder's name. And, you know, uh, we were looking at the development agreement there and trying to get some of the exhibits, so we have a complete agreement to look at. Um, you know, just looking at the plat, if you look at that, there's certain lots that are dedicated on the plat to the village. This one was not one of those. Um, so it, it sort of assumes that it probably was not gonna be dedicated to the village, but you can always ask, um, take it over. I'm not sure why developer would want to keep it, because he's gonna have to maintain it, and the cost.
Yeah, then is that something we can write him a letter to to either maintain it or turn it over?
Correct. And you should keep it, that's part of the approved plans for the development, and if that was to have all that area grass and maintained, that's what we should be doing.
How likely do you think preferred is to deed that over to us by the back, or we don't issue permits anymore, stuff of that nature?
Been trying for several years and it's not gotten anywhere.
Have they gotten letters from the attorneys? Or the weed?
I think that's probably the first thing to do is force the maintenance, that's gonna force a cost. And if that cost is, is to be too much, you look at an alternative, and the alternative here, city, you have it. The other thing is that it needs to be maintained for, you know, to be, uh, maintaining the depth, uh, had a dredge, that's expensive. I don't know if it's been maintained or.
Is that?
Built for plan, I don't know.
Is that in scope for my pond project? Probably, I don't think that's what he's doing.
It's probably, you know, BFPs, but it's not really anything we're gonna do.
The problem is.
Oh, well, then they're gonna have to get a deal for us to.
It's necessary that has to do that, unless is probably gonna go nowhere, is not gonna pay for it.
Blood goes, uh, the ordinance I read goes onto their taxes, if they don't.
Yeah, it'll go on the tax bill, and the taxes don't get paid in three years, then it'll go on our taxes, and only village can get it.
I feel like we have sent them, uh, mowing invoice before, and then it's up going on the tax bill, so. Any of the other, like, vacant lots that have paid? Mm-hmm. They have. That's true.
Go in, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but these guys didn't get a letter because it doesn't, it didn't go towards, uh, the six-inch weed ordinance?
Correct, and I don't have anything, I mean, Ben gives me the personal ID and then I take it from there, but.
Sometimes it's not against our weed ordinance violation, but there is like, uh, nuisance property ordinance? And then they go back on their taxes.
Yeah. If that's gonna be declared nuisance, I guess, well, it again, you want to look back at the approved plans for that contention area, it doesn't look like those trees were approved. Looks like they're just wild.
Right.
Um, and they should maintain it for the plans that were approved at that time.
Um, to me, it's, it's super important, because it's when people are driving in town, it's a nice one now, and we can make it look really, really nice, but, you know, eye-catching and.
And I live over there, and this is not preferred. That was a joke.
That's a good dad joke.
Good figure, explain it to us all.
Don't worry.
After two and a half hours.
So, Paul, can you work on some letters to these guys?
If you want to write a letter, we can try to find the plans.
Run an abstract of it, but. Andrew, could you scroll up a little bit? The next, this one right here, uh, actually, no, that's, that's upon the next one up. And that's owned by preferred, okay, so.
Those were the ones just now.
Yeah, so preferred owns the outside of the retention pond, and then who is the eight? The next one.
The owner of preferred.
Oh, perfect.
You don't, I feel like the water's from.
Yeah, far from nothing.
Well, I make a motion to have, uh, attorney Paul Mallor, uh, draft some letters and send to the, uh, owners of preferred properties to fix, uh, fix the, uh, distressed properties or nuisance properties.
Bring in the compliance.
Bring it into compliance.
Caleb, you have a second.
Discussion.
Was it just the preferred ones there at the pond, or are you gonna do it as the white as well?
We'll do, uh, we'll set a motion, uh, or should I just amend and add it?
Yeah, and that's to the school district?
No, we, that was a miscommunication.
Citywide development.
Yeah, with citywide development, so I added that to my motion. Is there a second?
Caleb, you have a second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then that, uh, letter E, it's same thing. Uh, F, discussion possible approval, ordinance amendment, planting of trees in subdivisions.
So I've been, uh, reviewing, uh, our current ordinances, and our ordinances as of right now state that we should be planting one tree for every fifty feet of street front, and if the builder does not plant that tree, they are to give uh, us a fifty-dollar tree fee.
Um. We've looked out into the development where, um, uh, you live over in that neck of the woods, uh, uh, they're obviously not in compliance with that, that ordinance.
Yeah, so Capstone puts trees in, um, automatically on their builds. I did speak with, um, Gateway, and I let them know that that ordinance is on the book, and that any, um, lawn that they're finishing should have two trees in it. Tony, I'm not sure if he reached out to you on that one or not yet, um, but I did talk to Troy on that. Um, I do not have trees in my yard, so I don't know if the village is gonna put two trees in my yard for a hundred bucks, uh, but, no, all right, that's fine, uh, but I think we already have the, we already have the ordinance that says we need to have at least one tree per fifty feet.
But Brandon, ordinance was written, and the fifty dollars for a tree isn't gonna go very far right now, we already have that set.
I agree, that's where I was going, Donnie.
And that's what, that's what, the current ordinance that was proposed and, and, and was, was kind of excluded from, uh, when it was approved for the grading and everything like that, would go a lot farther. It's, it's kind of up to the times of what today's ordinances are, and, uh, in other areas like New Richmond and, 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 uh, other developing, uh, municipalities have come to that terms with, uh, with, uh, you know, having the person decide to put a tree in their, in their, uh, in their yard at their discretion.
So I. Can we throw this back, uh?
Forward with that.
Oops, sorry, sorry, Don, I stepped on you there, uh, is there, uh, maybe we have a problem pushing it back to the Public Works? Pushing it back to Public Works and checking out some model policy to see.
I just got one more thing. So if you look at section thirteen dash one dash twenty-three, you go down to. Four B, it says trees. Then you have the village encourage, encourages tree planting now lots within old trees.
Oh yeah, that was, that's, is, that's the new one or that's the current ordinance? The current ordinance already has, I mean, you can plant trees. And that's what this one says to encourages.
Yeah. Or what's this?
Is it, that's, that is what currently is.
We have, we have multiple locations where refers to trees.
Oh, oh, here's a different one. Oh yeah, there's a different one.
Right.
So yeah, we need to.
So let's throw that back to public works.
But what, but before we throw it to public works, just for new. Buildings and people are building right now. Are we saying that they should have? A tree for every fifty feet. Are we telling that to builders? Are we, we're just gonna not follow our ordinances? What, what are we gonna do? Before, while we figure this out?
And then plant, which can decide their. Level of that decision right there.
Well, I think this is maybe two different things. I mean, this is talking about, I think, like people refer to as street trees. You get one for a lot. And this talks about encouraging people to landscape their yard and plant trees in the yard.
Yeah, so our ordinances for trees aren't really very clear.
Well, I think this one's pretty clear.
So right now, we, the one that says, yeah, we should have a tree for every fifty feet. Otherwise, you gotta give the city fifty bucks. So I think we should be planting. I think we should be enforcing that ordinance right now. That says you need to plant at least one tree for every fifty feet of tree front or give us. Fifty dollars the way it's written, or they have to give the city fifty dollars.
But I, I think, I think the reason to put it back to public works is to get the price where it actually should be.
No, and I agree, he can go back. I definitely agree. I'm just saying for. Right now until the next meeting.
What's that?
Is it a village street or is it a residential street or tree? Village street or residential? That's, that's.
Two separate things, right? This is a.
So it goes the right way.
Yeah.
So point, um, what was, what was wrong with the ordinance as it was drafted and submitted to us before that we were reviewing? I know Brandon, you didn't care for, uh, having, uh, government tell. Owners they, what they have to do on their property, but it is.
I still agree with that. I agree with that.
Floor here, mister, I, mister chairman, I got the floor here and I wanna make sure I'm not being stepped on. But I, I'm trying to, uh, understand here, uh, that, uh, uh, you know, we're telling. Uh, the individuals that if they're going to build in our community. That they have to conform to certain, certain guidelines that we establish and one of them is putting a tree in their yard. And it's like, it's like New Richmond has no issues with that as well. And I don't understand why the big pushback is on something. Something like this when we already have ordinances on the books that we haven't even been following.
So, Donnie, I agree with you that if we have ordinances on the books, they need to be enforced. My understanding before we had that conversation was that there was no ordinance on the books for trees. I'm all for enforcing ordinances that are already on the books. My opinion is that no, we shouldn't make you put a tree in your yard. However, the ordinances are written as they are before I got here, so we have to follow them.
I'd like to make a motion to move this to, uh, the next public works board meeting, mini meeting.
Just next seconds.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Gee, discussion possible approval, uh, power washing the village hall. The other day I pulled up, I just kinda.
There's that other ordinance that you guys just passed last month about planting grass or sod. I, I'd like somebody to look at that too, cause it, it contradicts itself in the same ordinance.
Can you email it to me and I'll send it over? Yeah, Tony and I, uh, email, email's way better. I don't, I don't wanna copy. Thank you though.
We can give it to. We'll email it.
And then we'll have, uh, well, Paul take a look at it too, just to make sure.
And it, and it's missing a, a number. It, it says to. It says to collect a, a fee in escrow, but it doesn't say how much. And I don't know who is supposed to figure out that amount. I don't wanna be responsible to collect two thousand dollars. They don't put their yard in, so the village does and it costs six thousand dollars.
Is there model policy from the other, uh, municipality? I think we had said twenty-five hundred at the. At the meeting previously.
But it's not, it's not an ordinance and I don't, I need a number in somewhere to, to go by.
Well, we'll figure that out.
So I, I helped write that ordinance, so I'll, I'll go back over it. I owe Tony a call back on that. I know you called me. And the other part of it is that it's not on the schedule fees. So the actual escrow for the landscaping doesn't actually come into the schedule fees anywhere, so the builder. Doesn't really know where that comes in. I. All right, well, let's put it back in public works and you guys can work on it. Let's move on. Discussion possible. Thank you, guys. Uh, power wash, the village hall. I noticed the other day when I was pulling up here, just, uh, like above where it says, uh. With the old bank sign, this is really December seven, it just, it looks like. It looks like it could use a little DLC meter. And then, uh, I wanted to give the guys the same, but also do we wanna keep like the. The vines and stuff on the front or do we wanna like freshen it up and pressure wash everything and try to like?
I'm all for that.
The bottom removal of the vines and pressure washing and.
Nicer. It looks real tired.
Any other thoughts on that? Um, so it was, it was kind of a funny thing. A guy. Just messaged me on Messenger today. Chris Hoppy, it's a different Chris Hoppy than the one I know. And he, uh, he's like, I'm looking for jobs to do whatever. And he's got like this heat pressure washer. The hot seat, hot one and it like takes everything and we got one right off and I asked him to give us a, a bid, so. Um.
The hot seat we have? I don't know.
And Donnie, you, uh, you were broken there.
Don't we have, uh, something in public works that can get out there to handle that bomb?
Yeah, the hot seat. But how do you get up? Do you have something to get you up there?
I, we don't want to. I don't know what. I'd have to look at the, the power requirement for that. So I think it's a two twenty. I don't know. I don't, I don't.
But you mentioned it does have a big plug on it. And I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna cost a ton of money, so maybe, um. If we could. If we can come up with some kind of a number that seems reasonable and if it's under that, we can go ahead with it. Cause I, but. Ideally, it'd like to have it done before pea soup days, before the parade and everything is, is coming down through here, you know?
Those vines are gonna keep coming back or?
Yeah, we'll dig them all. I like the vines. I do, I like them. Sorry.
Still nineteen twenty.
Yeah, and it would be nice if we're gonna wait, if we are gonna freshen it up, let's probably just. We talked about getting a new village hall. I'm gonna say it's gonna be under a thousand bucks.
Rip off the vines and pressure washer?
I'll rip off the vines myself. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, get, uh. Estimates for pressure washing the village hall, removing the vines and. Uh, being able to spend anything under a thousand dollars if a bid comes in under a thousand.
I second.
Discussion.
I wonder and what can we do this internally? Uh, and that's the only, my, my only concern on that. Bob is, is, uh. Thinking that it's better to have. You know, I mean, can we get it done? In a day or two, uh, with, I mean, cause thousand bucks, lot of money. We got, we got the means to do it. I just, uh, I wanna air that, uh, caution there. I mean, do we have public guys that can get out there and do that? That's my only concern.
The, the problem is it's probably, wouldn't say twenty-five feet tall, something like that. Um. So, and then they don't have proper, they've, you know, two twenty volt. So unless they have a big generator to run the thing and. And, uh, you'd have to get up and probably in the front end loader if that's even doable.
Well, how is that gonna be by somebody else?
Well, the other people will have the equipment for it, hopefully. And then maybe, uh, Bob, could you guys work on helping Caleb and I rip off the vines?
Yeah, I think we, we can have a lot. If that's what you guys wanna do.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The roll call. Roll call, Caleb?
Aye.
Chris Duba?
Aye.
Chris Marino? Myself, yes. Brandon?
Nate.
Josh?
Nate.
Uh, what was that one?
Missing Donnie.
Aye.
Aye. What was that vote, Andrew?
Four years.
Three days, four, yes, motion passes. Harry's, thanks. All right. Yeah. Uh, convene the closed session deliberating or negotiating specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are required to close session. Growing wings purchase agreement and developer's agreement with stats nineteen point five. Baron one, Baron G conferring legal counsel for the governmental body with rendering oral or written advice. Concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which. It is or is likely to become involved developer matter with stats nineteen point eight five. Baron one, Baron C considering employment of a public employee. Over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. For the clerk positions and, uh, applications update. Move to close session, make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Uh, Caleb, aye.
Chris Duba, aye?
Chris Marino, aye?
Myself, yes.
Brandon, aye?
Josh, aye.
Donnie, aye.
All right, we are going to close session. Coming out of closed session. There is, uh, was no action taking, taken? Um, so village waters, we bills.
Randy Crum making motion to approve, uh, village sewer and water bills, the amount of eight hundred fourteen thousand dollar, eight hundred fourteen. Thousand five hundred five dollars eighty-three cents.
Your second?
Caleb, a second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
New berries. Want to do a journey?
Randy Crum, second? Roll call.
Caleb, aye.
Chris Duba, aye?
Myself, yes.
Ready, aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Donnie.
See you next time, Donnie.